Paul, sir?
I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All's in favor?
Hi.
Good evening. Welcome to the November 5th, 2014 meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Tom Wakefield. The members to my left is Dan McDonald, to my right is Kathleen Franson. Associate alternate member is Michael Wood. Jane Moran, alternate member Bill Dunn, and alternate member, let's see.
Mark McCabe.
I got it just a little slow because I was thinking about what I was going to say. Mark McCabe, now, I just want to, for the audience, Mark has done work on the site that we're going to discuss tonight so that he feels he doesn't have a conflict, but if anyone in the audience feels that he shouldn't speak as a member, then you should speak up now or we'll take it as it's okay for him to speak. So is there anyone here that's...
It's a conflict.
Excuse me? You've got to come up and tell us your name and address.
Jim LaFrance, One Wolf Lane, and I believe that's a conflict.
Okay, slow down a minute. What is it again?
Jim LaFrance, One Wolf Lane, and I believe it's a conflict of interest that Mark does the work for him and then he's going to speak on behalf too.
Just to let you know, I worked for Larry Kelly Chemical Construction.
So that you are associated one way or another, correct?
Well, I mean, you can be associated a million ways, but I was not working for Arco.
Right.
My contractor calls me and says to me, Commander Glenn...
Well, I believe it's a conflict. You can speak on your own, Mark.
Okay, what, yeah.
Thank you. All right, well, you know, in that case, I think, you know, if there's a conflict, you should sit in the audience. No problem. Thank you, though. The only item on our agenda tonight is number one, Eric Arco at 441 Main Street. And it's regarding a special permit 2014-4 issued to operate a business park association where buildings are used by contractors and individuals working in the trades for business support storage. And a vote is anticipated. And before we start, I'd like to just give a summary to everyone of what this is about. And let me just get the...
Could you speak up a little bit?
Yep.
Can you pull that in closer to the mic?
Does this go out? No, this doesn't go out. No, I'll speak up. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm thinking ahead of myself and I'll talk, I'll talk a little louder. Is that a little better?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On, let's see, February 10th, no, March 5th, 2014, Eric Arco came before the board to utilize the former Estes Building for a place of storage for contractors, cold storage in the buildings out back. And then subsequent to that, we received a letter from the fire chief that he felt that the activities on the property exceeded the special permit which was issued on March 5th, 2014. And with that, I'd like to, I think I saw the chief come in. I'd like to have him come up and I want to ask him a few questions and then we'll bring the applicant up. So we're here tonight to discuss the use of the property and the possible recall of the special permit that was approved on March 5th, 2014 with, let's see, fourteen... sixteen stipulations.
Point of origin, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
John Christopher, I represent Eric Arco. Mr. McCabe sat at the last meeting, so I'd like to know who is designated to hear this tonight.
I'm sorry, yeah, yep. The one that's designated would be...
Michael Woods.
Yeah, Mr. Wood.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I'm off my game tonight. Sorry about that. Now, for the record, you heard what I just said. Could you just, I'd like to go over, I know you've been down to the property, Chief, and if I'm... I think I have, do you have one of these?
I do not.
You've got one?
I don't have one.
I do.
Yeah, I want you to have one of these, Chief, and there we go. Thank you. And I want to ask you a couple of questions. Now, I understand that you did visit the site, made a site visit to the site.
Two different occasions.
Okay. And on the occasion that you, the occasions that you went there, what did you observe in the building A, which is the front building?
Okay, building A. Well, let me just begin, let me begin with a couple of things before I go into what I observed.
I've been into the site on a couple of...
You know, you need to tell the, who you are and where you're...
Okay, thank you. My name is Robert Lay, and I'm fire chief of the town of Groveland.
Thank you.
I visited the site on a couple of different occasions. First couple of times, it was basically a drive-through. And the reason for that drive-through was I had no, I hadn't seen any plans of any sort. So, you know, while the building code is not my concern, certainly the fire codes would be. And they'd be closely related to building codes. So not seeing a plan, not knowing really what the scope of the work going on down there was, I thought it was in everybody's best interest if I got in there and looked around, which I did. I saw a few things that concerned me. While I won't give you those specifics right now, it looked like a full range of operations from my perspective. It looked like buildings were occupied by businesses, meaning there were people in the buildings working versus just stuff being stored in those buildings. So I sought out the building inspector on a couple of different occasions, asked him for copies of the plans. He assured me everything was being done properly. And that became a bit of an issue because I have no way to gauge that or judge that without having seen the plans and knowing what the intended use of the property was. My primary interest in this is not one of zoning, but it's one of building use. Because I need to know what the building's being used for, what works being performed in them, and what kind of materials are being stored there. And then based on that, there's other decisions I would need to make relative to fire suppression. Is there adequate water supply in that facility and things of that nature? So after I had seen, I had seen enough, quite honestly, that concerned me, that I called the state. And I called the state building inspector and asked him to go out and ride with me. I have a code compliance officer that I work with and a fire protection engineer that I work with out of the Mass Fire Academy. They accompanied me on my third visit. And we did a walkthrough of, I don't think we went through every building, Mr. Chairman, but we went through most of them. Some of them were secured, we couldn't get in them. But relative to your initial question now, when we get into building A...
Yes.
Building A was pretty wide open, being renovated extensively. At that point, it was not occupied by any businesses other than a, what appeared to be a unit on the second floor that was being occupied by what the building inspector described to me as a night watchman. And that was a bit of a concern because you can't have a building under construction being occupied by anybody, whether he's a night watchman or a caretaker. So we gave Eric Arco at that point some direction to have that person moved out. And Eric was...
Are you saying they were living there? There was evidence that the person was actually sleeping there?
Yes, correct. So we talked about that with Eric. He was quick to comply, copied me some emails, that he instructed the person that was occupied in a space on the second floor to leave. So...
When you say night watchman, was he a security guy? What was he?
I'm not exactly sure, Dan. The building inspector, and I may have these backwards, but he was described to me by the building inspector, I believe, as a night watchman or a caretaker. And then Eric described him as a caretaker or a night watchman. And I forget which person used which term. In either case, the building can't be occupied. There's no provision for somebody living in the building that's under construction.
What evidence was that someone was living there with Eric?
Beds, food, drink, clothing, alarm clock, clothes all over the place.
Guy just sitting in a chair.
Yeah, I mean, Eric, he didn't deny that he had someone staying there. So we told him it was not a good situation and he needed to have him leave. And as I said, he was quick to comply. And so in this case, that's just an illustration of where my concerns are. My concern is not the eventual, you know, who goes in that building and what kind of business they run and if it's in a residential community or how close they are to anything. Not my issue. My issue's one of fire code, quite honestly. So after we left there, we walked through a bunch of the other buildings. From what I could tell, some were...
Hold, at this point, can I ask you, did you go in building B?
Yes.
Where did you see in B?
Building B looked pretty much the same as it had looked when the lumberyard was in operation. There was some office space in the front, which is where they used to do commercial sales out of. That hadn't changed much. And then in the back, they had, I would say, construction equipment and materials stored in what appeared to be a reasonable fashion. Didn't really have any concerns in building B.
Okay.
Again, it wasn't an occupied space.
Yep, okay. I'm going to skip C because that's a building that, we'll talk about that one at a later date. Let's go to C, maybe C, D, which is a little building, you may not be able to see it too good, but it's a little building to the right of...
I can see that, there's a couple of sheds next to it. I don't think there was anything going on in D.
Okay.
It's a small building.
D was vacant at the time? And then... E, was it, E's the one behind it?
Yes. Not occupied. I believe that's the building that had an addition put on the back where a roof had collapsed and there was a new steel structure and some new doors and some siding on that building. Not occupied.
Not occupied.
No.
F would be the next building to the right. There's F and G, there's a small building...
Don't believe I went in F, I believe it was secured.
Okay.
I don't even know, I don't know if he has a tenant in there or not, but it was locked up and I don't think we went in.
All right. How about G, the one behind it?
Don't recall being in that one. I think that was one that's secured as well.
How about H would be the next building over?
Wide open.
Wide open.
Not occupied at all.
When you say wide open, was it secured or was it just open?
We went in and walked around, the doors were open.
Okay, okay.
Looked very much...
Vacant, though.
Like it did when it stored lumber.
We're going to go to I, which is, which is the little building right by the corner. There's a corner of the property.
Okay.
I is that little one on the right.
If I have this right, I was occupied. There was some vehicles inside of that building, the front door was open. There was a gentleman in there working on a truck. Looked like a mechanic, I'd say. Didn't get a good look inside, don't know what was really in there. We just looked from the driveway.
Okay. The next one would be I, J would be to the left with a little jog on it.
Can't say. Don't think we were in that one either.
Okay. K is a building along the property line. On the end.
Didn't go in that one. Couple of landscaping companies in there. There were trucks parked outside, the doors were down. Didn't see any activity, did not enter that building. You know, I will tell you that during this walkthrough, there was a lot to see in a limited period of time, so...
Got you, I understand, I understand.
L would be the long building between the...
In my earlier visits, I had seen inside of L as all the doors were open.
Yep.
It was, from what I could tell, landscaping equipment, I would describe it as. A lot of lawn mowers. Don't know really how many containers of fuel or anything like that. Did notice a pallet or two with fertilizers stacked on them. Don't know the quantities. Again, I was just a, pretty much a physical observation at that point. I wasn't in there taking an inventory of materials or anything like that.
M would be the building to, the way I'm looking, to the right of that. And it looks like a U shape.
Yep. Did go into M. From what I could tell, totally rehabbed space. Eric can correct me when he gets a chance, but I think that one's all sheet rocked, if I remember. Looks like completed space. Did not see anybody occupying that space at all.
So you're saying that building M was sheet rock inside?
Yep. That one looks like renovation has been completed. But with no tenants.
Sheet rock, do you think?
Correct.
Really? Okay. Was, did you happen to see whether it was fire rated sheet rock?
No idea. I did ask Eric what the use of that building was being. I believe he told me it was going to be automobile storage.
Okay. N would be the last one, the little one...
Big building down in the back, wide open. There was a boat in there, pretty large boat, if not two. Gentleman moving some equipment around in there, maybe an engine or something. They were offloading some stuff. But at least one boat, if not two.
Okay. All right. And let me just come back and just a quick question on C. Did you see anything in C, which is the building along...
Well, over the course of a few weeks and a few visits, that building went from what I originally saw as a steel frame, if you will, to when I went back the last time, had siding and roofing material on it. I classify it as a new building.
Yep.
I asked Eric about it, he said it was a replacement building. That, again, was a concern of mine. It's 7,200 square feet. Don't know the proposed use of the building. Haven't seen any plans, no idea what's going on in there. Fire detection, fire suppression, no idea. Unusual to see a building of that size without seeing any plans with an opportunity to do a plan review.
Got you. All right, well, good. Do you have anything else you want to say?
I don't know.
Okay. Great. I'm going to have, you going to speak on, Mr. Christopher? Okay, good. Thank you. You're going to be here, we may come back.
I'll stand, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm John Christopher, I represent Eric Arco. I practice law at 27 Lowell Street in Peabody. I'm also a resident of the town. The last time we were here, the chief reiterated the concerns that he did tonight. And I believe our purpose in coming back tonight, one of the purposes was to give you a complete outlay of what's in those buildings and their square footage. Since that time, Larry Ogden, the site engineer, has spent a considerable amount of time putting together a matrix of the uses in each building, what type of storage is being there, and the square footage of the buildings. In fact, we were fine tuning that matrix as of yesterday afternoon, so we just have it here tonight. I would also add that Mr. Arco had a fire engineer come in and do an inspection to make sure that these buildings meet the code. That report was mailed to the chief today, so we have a copy here, but the chief, the engineers mailed it to the chief as of today. I think it was finished yesterday at the latest. I'm not too sure. I didn't speak with the fire engineer.
Was that the report that was probably ordered and all to be removed?
Excuse me?
Is that the report that they wanted them all removed?
Of what?
All the buildings?
No, not that one. No, it was, I think the company is AON, they're fire engineers. And I'd like to call Larry Ogden up to give out his matrix.
Well, yeah, what I'd like to do is, and you probably figured out what I was doing.
Mm-hmm.
Now I'd like to go down, like we tried at the last meeting.
Okay. Can I just say?
Go ahead.
The electric company renumbered all the buildings.
Yep.
So Larry took on his spreadsheet, which I think you're going to benefit by. We have a copy for everybody. He took the old lettering and now put it down as what it is according to the electric company. And then he goes on from there. So I think, I'd like you to have that first before we...
Yeah, if he got something, that'd be great.
And he can address most of the issues on what he, he spent a lot of time on this.
Stay here in case I screw up.
And so I need you to just talk into the mic and say who you are and where you're from.
My name is Larry Ogden, I'm a registered engineer. I'm not really the site engineer, I'm just a...
When you say registered, are you a PE?
Yes. Registered professional engineer. I'm...
Did it happen to what your number is?
It's a very, very small number, it's old. I can get that for you. It's 22 something, but I don't...
You carry a pocket card?
No.
Are you required to?
Not that I know of.
State issue them?
They issue them, yes.
Yeah.
They require you...
If you're going to represent yourself as a professional engineer, you need to have proof. Do you have your pocket card?
What I'm presenting has nothing really to do...
I understand, but you said you were a professional engineer. I'm just asking you, do you have your pocket card with you?
No, I do not have my license with me.
Well, if you come again, you'll need it.
Okay.
I've known Mr. Ogden for quite a time. He is a professional engineer.
This isn't my first rodeo, okay? I understand. Siege is out that if you're going to represent yourself and if you ask for it, you should have it. He's licensed, he's near by the state, should have his card with him. I carried, when I was an inspector, carried the cards. You want to see it, I got it. As chairman of other boards, I've had attorneys before the boards, I asked them for the cards, they produced it. Just ask them if you got it. Next time, bring it with you, that's all.
I have my bar card with me.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure. Well, that's it. I mean, you, I'm just asking, if you're going to be professional, then you've got to, you've got to be prepared to substantiate your professionalism. I'll take your word for it. What do you have? Do you get some other documentation?
First of all, Mr. Christopher said I was a site engineer, that is incorrect. I'm just a consultant to Mr. Arco. The only engineering I have done on the project is the repair to one of the buildings. We have, let me start first.
Well, you should start. Mr. Christopher says that you've got different numbers, because I'm going to ask someone the same...
Yeah, I'm going to hand that out.
Yeah, someone the same question.
I'm also going to hand out with it a site plan that Mr. Arco had done by Machonda Engineering. They're from Stonem. We have six copies. Can you give me a couple more big ones? Because one of the...
I think the chief should have the...
Just trying to get some ventilation up here, it's working.
Yeah, it's hard here.
Yeah, wow, I'm like, all of a sudden, I'm having a hot flash here. And so we're going to try to open the doors and... It's hard to believe, yeah, when she opens it, you can feel it. That's good, Julie. Thank you.
Okay, I'll hand out these spreadsheets and then I can...
Let me ask you a question before we get going. Have you had an occasion to, to look at the decision in the notice of decision for the special permit that was approved? Did you have an occasion to look at that?
Yeah, I've read that.
You read it?
Yes.
Did you happen to read number seven?
I don't remember what...
Well, number seven is the maximum square foot of buildings areas on the property is limited to 57,066 square feet.
Right.
Okay? And I very quickly looked up in the right-hand corner, unless I'm reading this wrong, it just says that it's 80,024.
Yes, I'm going to try to explain that.
All right?
Okay? There's been a lot of confusion on this site, obviously, between various sets of plans. This spreadsheet, what I'm trying to do is accomplish two things. One is to show the various numbers that have been used for the different buildings, to show whether they're occupied or unoccupied, to show what the current use is, to show the materials that are currently being stored in those particular units, and to clarify the area of the buildings that existed on the site when Estes owned it prior to when Mr. Arco purchased it. So to begin with, if you look at page one, and the page two is similar. The first number I have is the number that Estes numbered the building with. Those numbers were used when we went to the building inspector to get a permit to renovate and siding, roofing, and to repair the rear of a portion of a building that collapsed. The next number is the number that was on the plan that was submitted to the ZBA. Those numbers being A, B, C, D, E, F, G. The last number is the current number that's shown on Machonda's plan. Those numbers were established by the electric department for the purposes of controlling their metering. So they wanted the numbers changed. I don't know what the...
Are you referring to the B 101?
Right, B 101, B 102.
Yeah.
So when you're looking at that plan and you're looking at B 102, that was A on the plan that was submitted to the board.
Okay.
Okay, it gets, it's confusing because the numbers shifted. But the electric department, for one thing, wanted to have the numbers listed their way for metering purposes, and I assume billing purposes. So if you, and then the last two sheets here are a compilation of the areas that were shown on the various plans submitted and the areas that existed when the property was purchased. So the first building, building A, shown on the plan that was submitted to the ZBA, is building B 01 on the plan in front of you. It is the front office building on Main Street. It is currently unoccupied. Its proposed use is office retail, which I believe was mentioned in the decision. And the building is currently being renovated. There are construction materials and tools for renovation on the site. This was the building that had an occupant, that occupant was removed. The person that was living there, the caretaker, the guard, whatever you want to call them. Building B is the next building to it along the power lines. That is numbered B 102 on Machonda's plan. That building is being occupied by Estes Building Association, which is Eric Arco's group. It's being used for property maintenance and storage of materials. What's stored there is equipment, tools, materials, vehicles, 50-gallon drum of gasoline and some diesel fuel. B one oh five is the next building down, which is shown on your plan, is, is Building C, which is the new building that was built. That building is, consists of units A through G, it is totally unoccupied. Mr. Harper ceased construction, I believe, shortly before or after your last meeting. The building is a steel-framed structure on a concrete foundation, it's metal siding and it's metal roofing. The slab has not been pulled, the slab on the first floor, or the only floor, has not been poured because he ceased operations, and none of the overhead doors or anything else has been installed in the building, including heating or electrical or, or anything, it's basically a steel shell right at the moment. It is a prefabricated building, so the sides are metal panels and the roof is metal panels. Building D is B one oh three, which is sort of up the page a little from that. That's occupied by B and B Sprinkler. It's used for storage, and he has equipment, tools, maintenance, and vehicles there. Next building up is, I can't even read my own plan, or Machonda's plan, B one fifteen. There was no number on the plan that was submitted to the Board of Appeals. That's a small building, it's about three hundred square feet, which I can show you later. It's also being occupied by B and B Sprinkler. He has an administrative office in there, he stores his paperwork, there's a desk and a computer. It is not open to the public. It's incidental to the work or his business that he stores items for in B one oh three.
Can I ask you a question regarding B and B Sprinklers?
You speak up?
Yes, B and B Sprinklers, in the building that you're referring to, the three hundred square foot building, what, where, if I were to look up B and B Sprinklers, where would I find out, find their business origin be? Where are they, where are they occupied?
I don't know if I know that.
Who knows it? Important question.
Incidentally, what I'm working on for what's in there for materials is a survey that was done by the fire engineer.
I'm asking you a question, I'm, I wanna know the answer to, where, if I were to look up B and B Sprinklers, where would they say they're located, what's their...
I don't know the answer to that, I don't know if Mr. Harper does or not.
Well, who, do you know, Sean?
I do not know the answer.
This is important, this is a very important question.
We had been, anticipated one, or the business address of B and B, we would have given it to you, but it's being sprung on us tonight.
I don't think it's being sprung on us.
Well, yes, it is.
This was discussed at the last meeting.
Not with the business address. The location of the storage is at Main Street.
The reason I ask this, and I'll, I'll be very clear, the reason I ask this is that when Esti's was there, keep in mind, this whole, this whole area was, was Esti's lumberyard.
I've been here twenty-five years, I know what area it was.
And keep in mind that one oh six in our ordinance talks about non-conforming uses.
Correct.
The board reviewed the use of the property to see if it was consistent with the use that Esti's lumberyard used, and if, if it was equal to or less than, then the board could then allow another business to take it over.
I understand that.
Okay, now, from the point of the first building, which is A, or you're gonna call it B one oh one, that particular building was, was gonna be an office building with people working in it. From that point back was gonna be cold storage. Okay? Esti's lumber did not have other businesses, i.e. B and B Sprinkler occupying buildings behind their, their property as such. They had cold storage of lumber, mills, et cetera. But they didn't have another business operating behind that building.
Let me, let me just point something out, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I think we can use the analogy that instead of B and B having his desk and his storage files in this little three hundred square foot building, he puts them right in the storage facility next to his pipes and whatever else equipment is used, and he does his paperwork in there. I don't see much of a difference, this is administrative storage, he's not running a business in the sense that the public is coming in and out.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Some of these buildings are quite large, and Esti's lumber used to be in there and part of...
Hey, hey, yeah.
Okay. Start over. Esti's lumber used to be in that building. And as, as, in the operations of a lumberyard, and I'm not a lumberyard manager, but it seems to me that in the process of storing and retrieving items from a warehouse, it seems to me that it's reasonable that you have forklifts and operators to retrieve and to store items out of warehouses or from storage, cold storage, or whatever type of storage it is. And, and that may involve shipping and receiving people. Now, you say there's some administrative function to that, is it along those lines or is it something other than that?
My understanding, and I haven't spoken to B and B, but my understanding in speaking with Mr. Harper is that this gentleman sits at a desk and the paperwork that he has to do for his work, he does there, he keeps his cabinets there, storage cabinets. Theoretically, he could put them in the main building that he stores his pipes and other equipment there. But for this reason, it's almost like an accessory use, but it's in a separate building.
Well, and I, and I don't disagree with you, but what, but the point I'm making is that that particular use of the buildings beyond B one oh one was limited to cold storage. It didn't, didn't say that, that you had people, now, in the, in the building out front, he could do administrative work.
Well, I, I, with all due respect...
It's a different business, because Esti's lumber occupied the first building. Now, if this guy is, is an employee of Esti's lumber, no problem. If he's out here as an employee of Esti's lumber, and he's taking down, he's writing down what he received that day, because there's a desk and files or whatever, but he's an employee of Esti's lumber, I don't have a problem with that. But if it's, if it's rented to a business where they're doing administrative work in that building, I don't, I think that's an expensive of a non-conforming use.
I disagree with that.
Well, that's, with all due respect, you know, you're kidding, but, but I'm saying, I think personally that anything beyond the, the first building, which is building B one oh one, if it's beyond the use of cold storage, other than if, if the, if one of those people out front occupied the building, and then they had storage out there, and they had, and it was, it's the same thing. Then I call it, what you're calling, an accessory use, but it's an accessory uses to a, to the use of the building out front, all the buildings out back are for, for storage.
Without debating this too much further.
Yeah, good.
Okay. The, for example, we have a landscaper in there. If he comes in at the end of a day and sees that he needs fifty more bags of fertilizer, he does a count, he fills out an invoice slip, an order slip or something like that, right standing there. This is what my understanding B and B is doing, instead of standing there in his storage facility and doing it, he goes over to this little building, enters it into his computer and puts out his order.
Then, then, when I went by on several occasions, I see a sign in the building and it says B and B Sprinklers. Why would you have to have a sign there?
I can't explain that.
What's that?
It's not necessary, because he's not running a business out of it.
That's what I'm asking you, see, I mean, someone's gonna tell me, do we have a telephone book?
Tom, did I just say something?
Go ahead.
I think we're gonna hash this thing back and forth all night. I think the chairman and you kinda led to it a minute ago. If we had the address and he's using it as an address, he's using it as a business. If he doesn't have an address registered there, and he's using it for storage of papers or whatever, if he goes into one building or the other, I could see that, but if he's using it as a residence, you know, as a business residence, mail going there, whatever, it's a business, same as the landscaper's.
I would agree if in fact he was getting mail and orders coming in from the public.
We, we need to prove that, we need, that's, that's my point.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
Does he have utilities set up there in his own name, telephone? That kind of thing?
He'd have to be here to address that question.
Right, so, but that, what that says to me is they're there permanently, they're not, they're trying to run a business from the office.
My understanding is, he was just doing his paperwork there because he didn't wanna do it next to all his equipment. So he rented out that space.
All the units...
But there's a difference between office and storage. I can store files and paperwork, and that's office-related, but it's really not an office, where you have an assistant answering the phone.
What if the person who rents, the renter sits there and fills out his own paperwork?
Did I hear you right that he has an assistant there, though?
Excuse me?
He has an assistant or a secretary of some sort?
I think you'd need to call him in and ask him this, I would have to give you that information.
I thought someone just said that. Okay. I thought Mr. Ogden...
Is it all right, John? Sorry if I addressed you as John?
Sure.
Yeah, John. This is very important.
I understand.
Because, because part of the agreement, part of the special permit was that everything beyond Building A or Building B one oh one was cold storage. So if you got someone in there, that's, that's, that's what he's occupying for his business, and my battery has just died in my, in my phone, but Julie's trying to look it up.
I have it as fifteen Hamid Street in Ipswich.
But that may be an old list.
That might be an old address.
Yes. So, so it's very important to, for the...
What do you suggest we do at this point?
I don't know, I, I, I'm disappointed that, that...
We didn't anticipate this question, I think if you were concerned about that and you thought B and B was running a business, you should have called him in here as part of this hearing.
Well, yeah, but, but he, he's not the applicant, the applicant is your client.
You wanted to know certain business aspects other than what I could tell you what he was doing there.
I think what he's asking is, as, as Mr. Harper is the landlord of B and B Sprinkler, what, what does it say on the lease that he is using that space for? That's what I'm, I'm asking. Is it an office, is it storage, what?
Do you have the lease?
Because usually on a lease, you have to say what the use is going to be, and what the general purpose of the space is going to be, and they can't do anything other than X, Y, Z in a lease. So that's why I'm asking, what does his lease say? No?
John, I, I don't understand that, that you, you know that the, that this is a, a special permit, and that the, that we were gonna ask what, what was in the buildings out back, and, 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 and there was concerns at the last meeting where I brought up that I, I understood that there was a building...
We have a matrix telling you what we have there.
Yeah, I understand that, but what, what, but the matrix is, is telling me that there's a B and B Sprinkler. It doesn't say that it's, you know...
Says it's storage.
But, but there's a, there's a desk and a person there.
I'm telling you that.
I have a question.
He's the renter.
I have a question, I, I think, I think there's, it appears to me, and I'm on the board, obviously, and we had a hearing and voted for that special permit, but it seems to me that there's an ambiguity or there's a lack of definition as to what, what the scope of the operations are at that site. And, and when you say it could be used for storage, and I'm bringing this up to the, the board here, I mean, storage does it operate within a vacuum? But for people, goods do not move themselves. So how is it that you can have cold storage or any kind of storage without somebody physically being on-site to move that material? And there were no limitations set on that permit as to whether or not a person could pick up lumber, say, off of a pallet, within those hours of operations and stay there the whole time? So, storage is a facet of many businesses. And operating a business out of that location with the limited scope of storage at that facility, I see as permitted within the special permit. So a lot of the questions here revolve around who's there and what are they doing? You know, if they're fixing cars, that's not storage. If they're dropping the car off and picking the car up, I see that as storage, so it's, you know... I think it's illusory to me as to where we're going and what direction we're going with this, as to what they're doing on-site.
Okay, well, the problem is, this is not, and for lack of a better word, I'm, I'm gonna just say industrial park because I can't think of another word that, that would be, that would be in front of it. But this is not a park where the, where the buildings in back are gonna be businesses that, that's their principal, their principal location is four forty-one Main Street, Building B one oh, one oh five. That's, that's beyond the, the first building is cold storage, and yeah, you can come out, you can, you can have a guy loading, unloading the truck all day long, as long as it's between seven and seven. That's not the issue, the issue is if, if that building is B and B Sprinkler, and that's his designated business with his telephone, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that's a violation of the permit, of the, of the special permit.
I would concede that if he is dealing with the public out of that building and taking orders, but if he's just doing internal paperwork, I, I come home at night, I sit at my dining room table and do work after I leave my office, I'm not running a law office out of my dining room, I'm just doing work.
Is that a home occupation, should we write this down? Would you write this?
I think it's a matter...
I'll stop doing it at the dining room table.
John, I think it's a matter of degree, and there's certainly a de minimis amount of paperwork that can be done anywhere.
No, no, I understand, but, but I just, I think it's very important to find out whether or not this is the principal location of the business, so that, that needs to happen.
Maybe we can just put a question mark and stop for the time being and move on.
Okay. We just found something here online, excuse me.
And the other, can I ask?
Supapages.com, which I think most people will agree is like Verizon's online yellow pages, right? Anybody disagree?
I would disagree only from personal experience, I'm, I haven't been very successful.
But that is their main function, correct, they, they provide listings for businesses and homes and white pages and...
I think the best proof of this is, in fact, if he's a corporation, what he lists at the Secretary of State's office as his business address, I think, I think Mr. Dunn was trying to get to the point that we should maybe put this on hold, come back another day with information.
If she has something, I think we should hit that.
Yeah, I'd be willing to, sorry.
This is just an average, quick scan of what's out there. And it says, B and B Fire Protection Incorporated, not rated, four forty-one Main Street, Groveland, Mass., oh one eight three four, nine seven eight four seven eight six one one nine. That says to me that that's where he is located.
It's just saying that he's throwing a phone in there, so if he didn't throw a phone in, he used his cellphone, his cellphone's gonna go back to...
Phone is an office. That, that's the distinction for me, phone, utilities, and...
Hold on, you can't talk unless you... You can't talk unless you...
No, what I'm saying is there's a difference between an office and storage. That's, that's what I'm getting at, that's what I'm asking.
You're not allowed to talk now either?
You can't, no. Not, not unless you get recognized, and we're not open to the public right now, we're doing, we're doing the...
What, what do you suggest we do on this particular issue?
What's gonna have to happen is we're gonna have to find out what this guy's principal address is, and, and I, I agree with, with Kathy, is that if, if he's listing it in here, is, is, is there another listing of it?
That's where his phone is listed.
Yeah, that's the only listing for that company, at four forty-one Main Street. Like I said, if he was, if he was in the first building, B one oh one, we wouldn't be having this discussion. And if he wanted to have storage out back and go out back, and he, he, he's legally in the front building, so he has storage out back, not an issue. But, but, but...
I gotta say...
Just let me finish. So if, so if, if...
What would you like us to do?
Well, I don't know.
Information-wise at this point.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have to find out, that's gonna, as, as Bill says, I'll, I'll make a note, you're gonna have to come back and tell us what that is. I mean, you know, or, or if something happens, it would be subject to, however, what happens, but, but that's, that's an issue. I can tell you, that's gonna be an issue.
Oh, Dan's been waiting.
Go ahead.
He wants to talk.
I don't, I don't think it's dispositive or conclusive that you use something as a business address. Many businesses use a P O blocks, and they certainly don't operate a business out of a post office box.
Hold on, wait, 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 let me just tell you, you're right, except that, hold on, hold on. You're right, except that the listing that she had didn't say two different numbers, that's, that's her listing.
And if you put aside whether or not you beat the sign regulations, bylaws in town, I mean, that's, that's a separate issue. Can't judge the book by its cover, if you...
Well, I, I, then this, this, well, I'm glad you mentioned signs, because let's go to, hold on, hold on. Under the stipulations, number three, signs. The signs will be on existing current sign with name of business, then the current sign is out front.
Is that on the roadside?
That's on the roadside.
Internally, why can't anyone put up whatever they want?
That's not, that's not what the approval was.
Does it say that?
Yeah, it says signs, existing current sign with name of business, that's all the signs that was allowed on it.
I, I think that means on the public right away, what you do internally, I have road signs in my house, and it's not a permit issue, because it's out of sight.
Okay, well, you're entitled to opinion, but that, but that's not what, what the approval was. Okay, John, what else you got, let's keep, I don't know, let's keep going.
Okay, a couple of points. All the buildings are gonna have electrical power, so they're all gonna be paying electric bills. There's Comcast on the site, so they can have a phone. I mean, it doesn't mean they're operating a business if you have a phone where you're storing stuff, most warehouses have phones.
Well, I store stuff in my garage, I don't have a phone out there.
No, but you have a phone in your house, you know?
Right, well, exactly, you have a... Right. Well, exactly. You have a phone at your office or a cellphone.
You know what they all have?
You don't need it in your garage.
This is... Hold on. This is 2014. You know what they all have? Everyone has these phones right here. See these things right here?
I understand.
Okay? That's what they have.
So you can't take a phone call in your garage if you haven't...
Yeah. You have this here.
Yeah.
I don't know many people that would have a phone line, pay for a phone line in a storage area when they're all carrying cellphones today. I mean, there's many, many houses that all they have... I have apartments, I have tenants, and they have no phones other than their cellphone. So don't tell me they're putting a phone line in there.
I'm just telling you there's Comcast on the site.
I understand. But this is cold storage, okay? Building out front, no problem. Buildings in back, it's cold storage. This is a residential zone. This is a resi... I'll repeat. This is a residential zone. It's not an industrial zone. It's not a business zone. It's a residential zone.
I think...
And it's subject to Section 106 of the ordinance, which is non-conforming uses. And you can't expand the use beyond what was there prior to. And prior to, all that was out there was buildings that had cold storage, and I doubt that they had Comcast in all these buildings.
There was more than that there. They milled lumber. They manufactured lumber.
You think that every one of those buildings had Comcast attached to them?
No, they didn't.
Yeah, okay.
But, Tom...
No, no, no. Excuse me.
But, Tom, they had employees running around.
I think what we need to do is get a definitive answer. Is this a business being run out of there? I don't think we can make assumptions based upon the fact that he lists the 441 Main Street there. That could be for delivery purposes for his equipment. I think we need to find out what he's doing.
I agree. You gotta find out what it is.
Call the gentleman in.
On the surface, it looks like an office. That's what I'm saying.
Pre-fashion it looks.
Right. So prove to me it's not.
When you go in there, you know where to go. I mean, it might be informational. Once you're in... It's a 22-acre site.
I know, but the size of the sign, it's not a little sign.
The sign is an issue. The sign could go.
The sign is half the size of that right side of the building.
One other point on that...
I can read it from the road, and I'm not... My eyesight isn't that good, but I can read the sign from Main Street. So that sign is not incidental to the property that would bring a person to it. That sign can be seen from 441 Main Street, right out on... Right, driving by in my car, and I could read what it was. So...
One other point on that particular building. When Estee operated there, for those of you that visited Estee's, you would go to the main office. They would give you a slip. You drove in, you went to that building, you gave the guy a slip. He had a desk, he had a phone, he had a telephone, he had lights.
Yep, you're right. But see, you're not listening to what I said. That's exactly right. Not a problem. But you know why? Estee's was running the building. Estee's had the use of the building out front, which you're calling...
101.
101, B 101. If this company was in B 101 and they had other buildings out back that they had stuff in, then that would be, just as John had said, that would be an accessory to his business out front. Same type of thing, because we've allowed the use of the building out front as office space. And if they're gonna have little buildings out back with stuff attached to the business in front, which is part of the non-conforming use that we approved, then that, no problem. But this isn't the situation. This is a situation where the sole purpose of the person being in that building is that he's rented that building with no attachment to the front building, which we gave approval for office space. It's an expansion.
Okay, but what difference would it make if there was an employee of Estee in there? The use is...
Listen, I didn't write the ordinance. This is a non-conforming use, okay?
That's right.
If you read Section 106...
And the non-conforming use goes with the use, not the property owner. It goes with the property.
It goes with the property. That's right. Estee's had employees, okay, and employees was of Estee's. It wasn't of B&amp;B sprinkler.
Absolutely. It doesn't have to be.
I think what Mr. Ogden is saying, though, that throughout the Estee complex, there were desks and...
I understand that, John.
Technology appropriate for that time, not the technology.
I understand. I agree with you. And they're accessory to the Estee's lumber. This isn't an accessory to the building out front. This is a separate entity. This is not a business park.
Your major concern is, and that 300 square feet is a business by definition under a zoning bylaw being run out of that 300 square feet.
Correct.
Okay. I don't think we can make any assumptions other than what the phone book says or what I've told you. And we need to get more definitive and... From the owner of the business.
Okay. Let's move on. No, no, no.
I gotta ask. Where does it say cold storage in the permit?
In a minute.
Versus heated storage. Can't be heated?
Well, yeah.
Cold storage meaning dead storage.
Dead storage.
Cryogenics? I mean, what kind of cold storage?
Yeah. We're gonna...
How cold?
We're gonna put Ted Williams in there.
Sed storage.
We're gonna find Ted Williams and put him in there.
Tom, can I just say something?
Go ahead, Phil.
For sake of argument, can't we just ask Mr. Harper to ask that gentleman to move out to the front? If he is doing that business per se out back, can't he just move out front?
That's my point, John.
Well, I think if we get to the point that you decide that this is, in fact, a business, that would be the solution.
Yeah.
I don't wanna be premature on it.
Yeah, no, that's my point, is it...
I agree.
I think that the developer has missed the point that this is a residential zone. I mean, another board, he could have come to another board and said, hey, listen, it's gotta be a lumberyard, and we're not approving anything but a lumberyard. Like, well, you know. It didn't happen.
He may, in your opinion, miss the point, and I'm not disagreeing with your interpretation of that. Mr. Harper is intent on improving how the property looks, and eventually he plans a residential component there if this board is agreeable.
I don't disagree with that. I'm not arguing that that isn't a heck of a lot better-looking property than when he started. Not an issue. All I'm talking about is the zoning ordinance
I understand.
and the black and white of the ordinance, and that's all we're here for, is to maintain the integrity of the ordinance.
We know what we need to do. Can we move on to...
Go ahead.
We'd like to move on to more buildings, other buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next building is, what was your building, E? It's B 104 on the Machonda Plan. There are two tenants. Greg Calistow stores automobile, washer fluid, individual bottles of oil, and antifreeze. Newell Farm Builders stores equipment, tools, and building materials.
Do you know how much of these, the oil and antifreeze, the quantities that are being stored there?
Not the total quantities yet, because we are surveying that. They're not large quantities. I do have quantities on larger items like the gasoline and for other tenants.
And do they maintain the... Help me, chief. There's a form that has to be on the premises. What's it called? A sheet. What's it called? MSDS. Do you know what the MSDS forms are?
Fire consultant is collecting those and putting that all together. Materials, I get them mixed up, too. Material safety data sheets.
Yep. Okay.
Next building, B 12, which was Building G, is also occupied by Estee Business Association. It's storing building materials, tools, vehicles, steel panels, an electric generator, and five gallons of gasoline.
I have a Newell Farm business.
I'm on the next page now.
What happened to Newell Farm?
Oh, that was part of the E we just discussed with the oil and everything.
Craig Calistow, he's Newell Farm business?
No, no. They're two different people. Greg Calistow's in Unit 104, Unit C.
Yeah, I know. I didn't hear you talk about...
Oh, I thought I mentioned his name. I'm sorry. He's storing equipment, tools, and building materials.
Okay, now what? Okay, and then we're gonna go to F. What is F? Building F?
Back River Development is storing construction equipment, tools, hardware, vehicles, two 20-pound propane tanks, gasoline containers, and eight gallons, eight gallons mass of gasoline.
Now, the propane, what is that? Is that... What's that for? You know?
It's probably for his equipment. You know, some equipment runs off of propane, a heater, a job site heater or... Building G on the ZBA plan is E 112. That's occupied by Estee Business Association, restoring building materials, tools, vehicles, steel panels, electric generator, and five gallons of gasoline. B 113 consists of three units. One of the units is rented out to various individuals that are storing either a boat or an automobile. No work's being done on them. They're just storing them there. B 11, which was I on the ZBA plan, is Area Auto. I believe that's from Thuen. They're storing vehicles.
When you say storing vehicles, what kind of vehicles are we storing there?
Pickup trucks, trucks, cars.
And is it on a dirt floor, a concrete floor?
Most of the floors are concrete. There are some. Some of the older buildings may have a hot top floor.
And are there any drains in these buildings?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't think so.
You know whether or not the fluids are present or removed from these vehicles?
I would believe they're present. I think the vehicles can be driven in and out of there. They're not wrecks.
And so is there any work being done on these vehicles?
I don't believe so.
Well, what does that mean? I don't believe so?
I don't know that there is. I don't.
Who knows?
Do you know if there's work? Not... So the answer is no, there's no work being done on.
So if someone told me that they were doing repairs, are they be lying?
Not necessarily. I don't know what building that was mentioned in.
Just actually, if there was, when the chief came...
Hold on. Unless you wanna come up and identify yourself. Go ahead.
Why don't you pull up a chair?
No, I don't want to.
You can go over there.
I actually know what Mr...
Eric Harper. When the chief came down there and he did see somebody working on the truck, that was my truck. We had a problem with the truck fixing it. Was a mechanic working on my truck then? Just trying to get it going.
Was it out of that building, Eric?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's fixed now, and he was unsuccessful.
Okay. Go ahead. Keep going. Thank you.
Building J, B 110, is 110 towing. They have towing equipment, vehicles, five gallons of gasoline, diesel fuel, and three gallons of diesel fuel, some oil, and a welding machine.
Now, what would the welding machine be doing in this storage area?
Could be there if he had to repair something. The plow broke or... They do snow plowing. Plow breaks, he welds the repair or the connector. I know plow's not...
Doesn't he have a place of business? This is cold storage. Is this where he's offering his business out of here? Or is he storing his plows there, his equipment there, and then coming to pick it up and going and working?
Well, he's storing his equipment, but that doesn't mean...
Does he have a shop where he works at? This isn't a workshop. He couldn't have welded there. This is not a workshop. Did Estee's lumber do welding out there for one ton towing?
No, they did not.
Well, there you go. If that's the case. I mean, you can't do it. Simple as that.
They may have done welding for Estee's lumber.
That's right. That's right. But...
So that was a use with the pre-existing non-conforming use?
Not for someone else. It wasn't. They did it for themselves, no problem. This is not an industrial park. It's a residential zone.
I'm not saying it is.
Well, it's a residential zone.
I disagree.
You can't be operating business. It's for storage. I'm gonna bring the truck over. I'm gonna set it here. Needs repaired. I'm gonna take it to my shop where I do the repairs. You're not repairing there. It's cold storage. It's simple as that. This is a residential zone. I don't know how much plane we can be. This is a residential zone. It's not a commercial zone. It's residential.
I understand that.
They had lumber stored there. They didn't weld trucks there. Or if they did, it was their own truck, Estee's lumber, not one-ton towing. What's... By the way, where is one-ton? What's their business location?
Hable, Mass.
There used to be on White Street, Hable.
We're gonna look it up, John, and same as the last one.
We'll put a star next to that one.
I would say, and I don't know what 110... I know it's a towing company. I have seen commercial trucks carry welding equipment on the back of them when they're towing around.
I understand. But my point is, my point is, this is a place where I drive my truck over there, I leave it, or I leave my plow, or I may have a... The wheel that they put, the dolly, they might leave a couple of dollies in there that they tow, and I bought another one now. I don't need this one, but later I'll take it and work on it. But you're not gonna work on it there. It's storage. You have to have another place of business that you're operating a business out of, not doing work there.
Well, I think the determination you're concerned is, is the welding machine part of the business that goes out every day? Are they working on welding?
Yeah, that's right. I'm right.
Are they welding on the premises?
Yeah.
I'm sure the fire chief would be interested in that, too.
I'm sure he would.
If it's, you know, if it's... You're right. If the towing truck has that on there, for some reason, they're going out and they're gonna pick up a boat trailer because it broke, and they gotta weld it so they can put it on the thing. Okay, that's not... But if they're over there repairing stuff, that's a no-no.
Put a question mark, welding on premises.
Okay, good. Thank you. Go ahead. Excuse me. Go ahead.
ZBA Building K, B 106, Unit A is occupied by Al Pizaka, if I'm saying that right. Landscape, there's storage, landscape equipment, vehicles, five gallons of gasoline. He does not store fertilizer. The next one is Ryan Miller. He also stores landscaping equipment, vehicles, snow removal equipment, and four to five, four or five gallon containers of gasoline.
So when you say four or five, he could have as many as 20 gallons?
Right. And Unit C is occupied by the same occupant as Building A. He's occupying both units.
And are these units separated or attached?
They're next to each other.
Is there a partition between them?
Yeah, I'm sure there's a wall there with an opening.
You're sure?
Yeah.
Is there or isn't it?
Yeah, there's a wall.
Okay.
And it's open into the other unit. Unit...
Is the wall rated, you know?
No. It is not rated.
Okay, good. Thank you. Keep going.
ZBA Number L, B 107, it's Neo... Unit A is Neo Clancy Stone Works. Stores masonry equipment, a cement mixer, a trailer, and some landscape tools. The next unit in that building, Unit B, is Truly Green Lawns. They store equipment, landscape tools, 10 skids of fertilizer, seasonally, in the spring and in the winter, the summer, I guess. They don't store it during the winter. It's non-nitrate oxide fertilizer. There's approximately 2,000 pounds per skid, and he stores five gallons of gasoline. The unit, ZBA Number M, is B 109. Unit A is stored by Robert LeBlanc, occupied by Robert LeBlanc. Electrical supplies, tools, work van, and two motorcycles. The next one is...
What does he do, Robert LeBlanc? Is this just personal? Is this personal storage? Or is he electrician?
I believe he's an electrician.
You know where his place of business is?
No, I don't.
He's not operating right now.
John, can I just ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
I just wanna go back to... I just wanna ask a quick question. I wanna go back to B 106, which was previously K. You have listed Units A, B, and C. I'm just wondering... Is that little...
C is that little one that's not marked on that building. If I can get my papers out of my way. That's B 106 is down here on the left-hand corner by the electric light, electric lines. There's a Unit A and B shown on the plan. There should be a C on that plan. It's right adjacent to Unit A. Consists of 550 square feet.
Was that used in the total square footage?
Yes. Yeah, see, that's... If you add up Unit A and B, it doesn't add up to 5,450. But if you add 550 to it, it does. So there should be a C there. That's on B 106. And they're occupied by the same person. be a C there, that's on B one oh six, and it, they're occupied by the same person, and they're attached, they're right next to each other. Yeah, I think we're at B one oh nine, that's the large building at the back of the property, it was the farmer's sawmill. We talked about Robert LeBlanc, Baldini Chase HVAC, stores sheet metal, pipe, and fittings in a vehicle, and the gentleman, Rick Greenwood, Greenwood stores in unit C, vehicles, boats, and furniture. The last building is building N, which is the one down by the, closest to the river, it's B one oh eight, and it's occupied by Peter Noe, he's storing boats, and a vehicle, and a generator.
Now, these are inside storage?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, that's, there are boats that are stored outside there.
And, and are they stored on, on the ground, or are they stored on, on, on grass, pavement, what are they stored on?
I believe they're stored on the pavement that runs, that's there.
Okay, and.
And chewed up off the ground.
Are these boats being winterized for the winter?
I don't know that.
And, and are you using non-toxic antifreeze to winterize them?
I don't know if they're winterized.
Who knows that, very important.
Mr. Noe would know it, and will find out for you.
Been aboard it for sixty years, okay, and you know what happens when you, when you don't use non-toxic antifreeze to winterize your boat on the ground, animals get killed.
Okay, well, we'll have to find that answer for you. At the bottom of the page, I listed the three woodsheds that were removed from the site, those were the woodsheds that we were gonna move to where building C is, but decided it was not structurally sound, and built that building C.
Where were they located on the original plan?
There, these buildings out front here on the plan that are sort of crosshatched, they weren't located on your plan, that's one of the problems.
On the plan that originally came before us?
See, it's actually part of this.
No, they were not located on that.
I think on that plan that shows some proposed forty-B units.
They're located here on this plan.
Well, listen, this is what was, this is, this is the plan that we looked at, on March fifth.
I understand that.
Okay, now, on, on March fifth, see this plan right here, do you have this plan?
Yes, I do.
Okay. How, how do you, how do you come before the board and tell us that, that there was, there was buildings that weren't on this plan, that we approved, that you were gonna move?
Because that's, we, that's where we filed with the building department a year before.
Hold on, no, 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 let me, let me, we, we, we're not communicating, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it again, I'm gonna ask you again, this was submitted to the board.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, now, you're sitting here, six months later, or four or five months later, and you're telling me that you were gonna move buildings that was on the site when you came to the board, but it wasn't on the drawing that got, 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 submitted to the board, which we base our, our special permit on.
That's correct.
So how do you, how do you justify that?
I'm not justifying it, I'm just telling you what buildings existed on that site.
I'll be the first person, and I'll ask John, how do you justify that?
I think at the last meeting, we went over this issue, and we indicated that this was a conceptual plan, and I, looking at the YouTube.
Hold on, this is, this is part, this is recorded.
I understand that, I think we went through this whole issue, this was a conceptual plan that Eric, I wasn't at the first meeting, by the way, at the special permit meeting, I watched it on YouTube, I think there was a failure to communicate by Eric that this was conceptual as opposed to actual, the, he did say, as I recall, looking at the YouTube video of the meeting, he did say, if my memory serves me correct, that he had seventy-nine thousand square feet, and that those woodsheds over closest to the residential area would be torn down, or moved, so, and this is what he proposed the special permit would look like if it were granted, and these white buildings closest to the residential areas, I think those are proposed forty-B if and when he ever gets to coming before the board on that, so this was all conceptual, technically, showing some buildings on the ground, and quite frankly, I'm, I'm.
Let me, let me tell you, I asked him specifically if this plan submitted to the board on March fifth, two thousand fourteen, was what was on site on, on March fifth, I guess it was, on two thousand fourteen, 'cause I don't know, I'm, I'm, I've been here ten years, but I, I'll admit, I never went beyond the front door, or, or, I, I think I went to the shed to the left, I mean, to the right, once or twice to pick up lumber, but that wasn't my, my place I ever visited. So when I asked him, is this a true, because it's part of the recorded plan, it's ready, it's attached to this, it's recorded, uh, special permit, this is attached, then, then I would think that this would be an accurate depiction of what was there, it would no one talked about, other than over here, on this side here.
That plan was proposed to, for what was going to be used as part of the special permit, those buildings that are represented in white, they're, what was there were some sheds that they were gonna either move or tear down, so he wasn't gonna use them as part of the special permit unless they were moved over closer to the right of way, or the electric companies.
Yeah, but that's not what's on here.
No, it doesn't show the sheds are being torn down.
Let me, let me go further, I mean, having done code enforcement work for at least two or three days, and having done a lot of research, and I'm sure you as an attorney has done research, you can only research what's on record, correct? And when you go back and you look at a record to try to determine whether or not it's in compliance, all you have to work with is what's recorded, this recorded piece of paper that is attached to the approval is not what's on site.
The only thing that, that.
And, and so, five years down the road, how does the person, five years down the road, know that, oh, this is only conceptual, and we didn't know, we, we, you know, we, oh, we know it's, it's recorded, but it's only conceptual, and, and we didn't know, how would we know? What I'm saying to you is that.
I, I understand what you're saying.
It has to be part of the record, because five years from now, someone has to be able to look at this thing and see that that's what's there.
May I speak?
And that's not what's there.
May I speak?
Go ahead.
Those sheds that were torn down, were not gonna be part of the special permit, they were either gonna be moved over here, which was C.
It was never discussed, you, you can't have it both ways, you can't, now you can't sit here and tell me that we're gonna move them over there when it was never discussed.
I believe that was discussed, I wasn't at that meeting.
It was not discussed, I'm telling you, I, I'm the chairman, and I've been here, and I got a good memory.
Let me tell you.
It wasn't discussed, they were gonna move three buildings over there.
What is your remedy? We, we went through this at the first meeting.
Well, I, I, listen, I'm trying to determine whether we're gonna recall the special permit.
Okay.
Okay, part of that is to determine whether or not this is accurate, and it appears now that you're telling me that there were things over here, that they were gonna move over here, and it was never discussed, not only was it, wasn't discussed, and it wasn't on the plan, this building, there was nothing there.
And would you like us to file an amended complaint?
Well, what's, what's gonna have to happen, moving on, depending what happens tonight, if it, if it gets recalled, then the issue is a dead issue, if it doesn't get recalled, and, and we're gonna go forward, the, the fact that there's a building there, building C, is an expansion of a non-conformant use, 'cause that building was not there the day we, we approved it, and as I told you, you know what I said to you, this is a quasar judicial board, and I said to you, if you went to the judge, and you submitted this to the, to the courts, and it, and it became an, a, an inaccurate piece of documentation as, say, exhibit A, and it wasn't accurate, that judge wouldn't be too happy with you, would he?
No, and the lawyer who did it would, would request to file an amendment to the, what was filed with the court.
Yeah, okay.
And he'd, he'd own up to the fact that it isn't accurate.
Okay, that's okay, okay, but however, this, this particular case is, the use of that would be an expansion because Estes didn't have a building there.
No.
And, and, and there's nothing on this plan that he submitted to tell the board that he had three other buildings there, and, and I wouldn't call those buildings, those were, those are sheds, they were, they were just a roof with a, with a truss and, and metal, I mean, I, calling them, yeah, they were structures, but they weren't sheds, they weren't enclosed, so there was no, there was no, they were just cold storage for lumber, but, but to come, come to the board five months later, or whatever, and, and tell the board that, oh, well, you know, you slipped our mind, we, you know, we were gonna, yeah, we were gonna put this over there, and, and, but, because I can tell you, I felt that he would've got approval for an expansion of a non-conformant.
I'm asking you what.
Well, that's, that's one, that's part A.
No, but what do you want us to do to cure that problem?
Well, no, depending on, depending on what happens tonight, you got an expansion of a non-conformant use, okay, that's one thing, and secondly, secondly, you got a building that's, that's ten feet from the line when the, when the ordinance requires fifteen, so you got, you got two issues. You got, you got two issues, John, you got, you got an expansion of a non-conformant use, which wasn't discussed at the time of, of the meeting, which, which, which would have totally changed the complaint.
And I think, I think we told you, and I wrote you, that we were gonna go, come back at a later date for.
Oh, yeah, I understand, no, I, you know, you just asked what you're gonna do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand that, but, but, but it's, it's an expansion of a non-conformant use, i.e. the, the building C wasn't there the night that he came on, on the, on March fifth, two thousand fourteen, that building wasn't there, had it been, had, had he said it, I'm gonna build that building, that would've changed the whole thing, there would've been, now, we would have to say, oh, wait a minute, now, let's see.
Well, we, we.
Now, now, wait a minute, now, even, even if, even if Estes built that building, they'd have to come back to the board for an expansion of a non-conformant use, they couldn't just build a building there.
I would suggest the Gilson case out of Gloucester may differ with your opinion.
Well, then do it in Gloucester, and this isn't Gloucester, this is, this is.
It's a ruling from the court.
Hold on, go ahead, wait a minute, go ahead, Bill.
I always try to be a fair person, the way that I look at this plan, and listen, I am all for that park, one hundred percent for that park, if you take a look at the plan that was submitted on the first time he came in, it shows the three potential later-on residential buildings, okay, now, it shows this plan today with these three buildings, those buildings are clearly would be in the way for him to install those buildings, so they had to be moved, and, and someone must've known in the beginning those buildings needed to be moved out of there, that's my point, and that's just how I'm looking at it, it's what's in front of me. So clearly, they, someone knew those buildings were in the way to put this project in, so they were gonna be go, they were gonna either be torn down, moved, or something.
The building permit we received from the building department a year and a half ago said that those buildings were gonna be moved.
Okay, I don't know that, I'm just saying.
Well, I can show you the building permit, but you're correct.
Listen, you know, you're talking two different things, this is the Board of Appeals.
I understand, I'm just answering his question.
But, but it, it was never articulated to the Board of Appeals, that, that, that that was, wasn't there.
That's probably correct.
So, you know, and, and, and if you look at, you know, I'm sure you have, there's a, the aerial photograph of, of the.
No, absolutely, we're not arguing that that building wasn't there, it wasn't there.
But it was presented to us as though it was, simple, simple, just as, basically simple as that, your applicant came to us, submitted this, said the building's there, we look at, we look at the, the listing agreement, there's no building there.
And I, and I think, I use the line from Fool Hand Luke.
I know, I understand, that's mine, that's my line, what we have here is a failure to communicate, and in fact, I, I used that line about fifteen minutes after I came to my first meeting here, yeah, I understand, but, but that doesn't, that doesn't, that doesn't make it right that, that this happened, because this is recorded.
But I think you remember, when I came here in October, I said, we're trying to make it right, we want this to work.
Well, that's right, let's do it.
Okay.
Okay, well, I thi- I think there's, there's some.
Can I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
The, the special.
Speak up.
The special permit authorizes fifty-seven thousand sixty-six square feet, is it the intention of your client to stay within that square footage requirement?
We're bound by the permit.
Okay, now, is it, is it his intention to take down some buildings and, for instance, say subtract ten thousand square feet and move it somewhere else on the lot, 'cause...
It's our intention to confine the fifty-seven square, thousand square feet to the buildings we have, and Eric and I discussed the fact that if you have more square footage than some other buildings, but it brings you beyond the fifty-seven thousand square feet, then you don't fill up those buildings.
If you look at my.
You can have, it's, it's almost like having a skyscraper of fifty, fifty.
Yeah, that, that's an enforcement issue, John, that doesn't work.
Yeah, it is an enforcement issue.
That doesn't work.
But, but your client pulled the permit, and started a construction project, and then it was stopped, okay, and then how many additional square feet was that building?
If you go to my last page, I have a summary of all that.
He can explain a little bit what happened.
And if that was additional space, was there going also to be an offsetting subtraction somewhere else, was that the intention, or was it to add more space?
If you could go to the very last page, they have a summary of the buildings, of the areas of the various buildings, the columns that are in yellow are the plans that were on the ZBA, the sizes were from that plan, they add up to fifty-seven thousand sixty-six square feet, that was the basis of your permit, that's what was shown on the plan that got submitted to you, the total area of the buildings, let me go back to that for a minute, that did, that plan did not include the woodsheds, you can argue, it wasn't there, it's obvious it wasn't there, if you add those in, there was a pre-existing amount of building of seventy-four thousand four hundred and six, adding up the areas of the plant, of the buildings on the ZBA plan, and adding in the woodsheds, since Mashonda has gone out and measured the exact measurements of all the buildings, those dimensions are shown in the next column, the column with the green numbers, the current area of buildings on the site is sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet, Mashonda's drawing, which the chairman noticed when he first looked at it, at the top says there are, there was originally an existence of eighty thousand twenty square feet, that was counting the three woodsheds.
So have you seen the list, have you seen the list on this plan?
Yeah, that I added up, that comes to fifty.
What are the variances between the, between those?
Well, the whole variance is that, yeah, it's about twelve thousand square feet.
Is it a particular building that was left off?
I can, I can try to explain that.
Or, or are there several mistakes?
No, let me just finish first, the woodsheds were eliminated and building C was built, so I put building, the area building C back in, took the woodsheds out.
But the wood, the woodsheds.
I know, they didn't show on that original plan, I'm not arguing with you.
Yeah, they're, they're not even, we don't discuss them, because they're not part of the discussion, okay, the woodsheds aren't here, you, you're looking at fifty-seven oh-six-six square feet, which is what, what you should have on that, as, right now, as we speak, you should have fifty-seven thousand sixty-six square feet of building on that site.
What, what are the plans?
I, I disagree, because I think the actual footage on the ground, we asked to store fifty-seven thousand square, we didn't ask to have fifty-seven thousand square feet of building, this is a use permit.
Yeah, but that, that, that was what it's limited to.
It's limited to fifty-seven thousand square feet, we can keep buildings unoccupied because we'd be over the amount allowed by the permit.
Nah, see, I, I, I disagree with you, because that's, that's an enforcement issue, we're in a small town, and, and, and that, that, to me.
But, but the buildings that, the building.
Who's gonna, who's gonna enforce the fifty-seven?
That's the building inspector.
It's not the boards, it's not the boards.
Building inspector.
Okay, well, you know, we, we're not gonna leave it to the building inspector, because first of all, anyways, I'm not gonna go into that, we're not gonna leave it to the building inspector, it's gonna be done, we hear it on the board level, you got a, you got an issue with, with a square foot of buildings there, you're, you're over the approval limit, so, I mean, I, this is, this is, you've done a good job of, of really making it convoluted, because.
I can explain to a degree why this discrepancy arose.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and, and, and we, we, you know, I didn't set, a we, the board did not set this number, we asked the developer what the number was, he could've said, I don't know, like I said, he could've said a hundred thousand, I don't know.
At the meeting, he said he had seventy-nine thousand square feet, but the, the plan showed fifty-seven thousand, you added up the columns, now, my understanding is that the architect who drew that conceptual plan based it on a land court design plan from the nineteen-sixties, which basically showed fifty-seven thousand square feet, however, apparently, between that sixties plan and the time he bought the property, those buildings were expanded a little bit, that's how you get this.
John, I'm gonna look at my notes on this, because you know what I do when I'm doing this, I have a list that I go down, and I say to the person, how many square feet do you have, and when he tells me, that's what I write down, and that's what I give Julie, I don't make it up.
The, the permit asks, based on what was attached to it, for fifty-seven thousand plus square feet.
Yeah, but now, now you got sixty-nine eighty.
That's what's actually on the ground. That's what's actually on the ground, because I said this initial plan was conceptual.
Yeah, but that's, but you see, the special permit was for fifty-seven oh six six.
We, we, well, I'm gonna disagree in the sense that we asked for use of fifty-seven thousand square feet of storage. We could have a million square feet of buildings, but we're limited to fifty-seven thousand square feet.
Yeah, I think, I think you're off the launch on that one, John. I have to disagree with you.
With all due respect, I disagree. It's a two-way street.
Yeah, I think, I think that one, I don't agree with you.
So if you wanted to put, for instance, a million square feet of unused space, you could put a high-rise back there?
No, no.
And not have anybody in there, and still be part of that.
What I'm trying to say, Mr. Woods, that we, if we had seventy thousand square feet of buildings actually there, and they were actually there, there were more if you count the sheds, we are limited to fifty-seven thousand square feet of storage. The permit did not authorize construction of fifty, of sixty-nine or fifty-seven thousand square feet of storage. It said you can use what's there to the extent of fifty-seven thousand square feet. And I'm very confident that a reviewing authority would agree with that interpretation.
And who's gonna watch the fifty-seven thousand versus the eighty?
I think you're wrong on that one, John, I have to disagree with you.
That's an enforcement issue.
Why would you build a building you're not gonna use?
The only building that was built was C, and we're not using it.
But why would you even keep it, then? Well, what's the point? You're gonna have to put electricity in there, you're gonna, that seems a little out there for me, but.
Quite frankly, quite frankly, that it may be a situation in the future that if this park is running well, there may be requests for an amendment to the permit.
But why would you invest the money now? Because I, I'm, I do development, so here, so this is what I'm coming at.
The buildings were there, he probably should've asked for sixty-nine thousand. He thought he only had fifty-seven.
Right, so ask for what you need, that's, I mean, he asked you, "What do you need?"
He basically, this is what he thought he needed, but now we're finding out we have more, but we're sticking with fifty-seven.
It isn't just more, John, I mean, you know, it.
It's twelve thousand square feet.
Yeah, I mean, that twelve thousand square feet is not, you know, five hundred square feet, oh, oh, well, I miss a shed or a attachment.
If you deduct C, we're down to five thousand square feet, so eight thousand.
Yeah, but I mean, even that, I mean, that's, you know, this isn't a small mistake. This, this is a substantial difference between what got approved.
This, this is what, this is what the plan asked for.
And I totally disagree. I totally disagree with you that, that, that you can have larger buildings there and just not use it, that doesn't, for me.
I, I, I disagree with that, John.
Yeah, I mean, well, you wouldn't get it here, if you came to the board, and you know.
This is a use permit, this is a use permit, it's not a construction permit.
I understand, I know, but if, if, if the developer told us exactly what he wanted, what he had there, there wouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
But now what happened is that he went in there, and, and through the process of, of doing whatever he did, the chief went down and started to do some research and found out that he was exceeding what the permit was. But however, had he come in and told us, like I said, he could've said a hundred thousand, and I would've believed what he said, because, hey, you're the applicant, I'm not gonna call you a liar.
Actually, actually, if you wanna use a euphemism, he shot himself in the foot, he asked for less than what he actually had.
But that's, but, but my point is that.
Which is less detrimental to the neighborhood.
Let's go five years, let's go five years down the road, and, and I'm doing research, and I'm saying, "Oh, jeez, let's see, uh-huh, we got this here, and I come," I've had this happen.
Special permits can be amended by vote, or they can be amended for clerical error.
What if it come for an amendment when he realized that they were sixty-nine thousand square feet?
I just found that out.
He wasn't represented by counsel.
Yes, today?
When this plan was drawn, when was that?
Well, that, that's what I'm saying, so, as, in development, no, but in development, that's what you do, is you figure out what, you know, you go through the process, you say, "Oh, wait a minute, it's sixty-nine thousand versus fifty-seven thousand, I need to revise my permit."
He did not.
That's rule number one.
He did not have an, an engineered, drawn plan when he came here in March.
No, I understand that.
No, but he could've taken a tape measure and measured the building, I mean, anybody can do that.
Well, what I'm saying is.
We knew there were seventy-seven, seventy-some-odd thousand square foot buildings.
He could've asked for seventy-nine thousand square feet.
He could've asked for a million, I mean, it doesn't, the problem is.
As I say, it's a use permit, it's not a construction permit, it's a use permit.
All I tried to attempt here is to show you what was existing.
I agree.
Right?
And, and what was there.
What you permitted, we're not arguing about.
I understand, when you buy a new property, you don't always know. You wait until you get through the development, and you get through this, and you, and then that's when you find out all the things you should've known beforehand that you didn't know ahead of time. So that's what I'm saying, and when those things happen, you come back to the board and you say, "You know what, there was a discrepancy in the amount that I had initially, I apologize, we didn't realize it, because we just purchased the property, now we've discovered that, like, you know, Tom said, that, oh, you know, there was a building we missed, or whatever." So then you come back and you, and once you've done your discovery.
Ideally, the due diligence should've been done with this plan in March.
That's what I'm saying, and some things get missed in due diligence.
It wasn't done, it wasn't done, that's why we're here.
It happens every day.
That's why we're here.
Right, but, that's what I'm saying, so, but at that point, that's, I think that's what people are upset about, because it's fifty-seven thousand, that's what was approved, and now all of a sudden, it's sixty-nine thousand eight eighty. And so I just did a little bit of math while we were talking here, and actually, only two of the buildings were correct. Not all of the other ones are, well, okay, so this one was minus eight fifty, plus three hundred, plus thirty-five hundred.
I think the problem is that every time we meet, there is issue. There is something that comes up, that's a discrepancy on something else from the previous meeting, and it gets a little frustrating. I mean, we're talking about simple math, right? My ten-year-old can take a tape measure, measure a building, and get the math correct.
Agreed, but sometimes you do take the previous owner's word for it in the very beginning stages, I get that, it happens. But I'm usually not off by thirty-five hundred feet, but thirty-five feet, maybe.
Yeah, Kathy's right, because what happens, and, and this does happen, where, where we've given approval, and they come back the next, the next meeting, says, "Uh-oh, we made a mistake, you're gonna do amendment." Not a problem.
Okay, and that's right.
However, this particular one is major, because there's uses that I'm, I'm not convinced that there are some uses that exceed the, the use.
I see, I see the uses as being more of a concern with this board. For example, if we came, if we came into you and said, "We have sixty-nine thousand square feet of buildings, but because of management considerations, we only want to use fifty-seven thousand square feet of that. Would you make us take down twelve thousand square feet?" I don't think so, and I don't think any, anybody would expect that to happen. I think the issue here, we're stuck to fifty-seven thousand square feet, and you wanna know what the uses are to make sure that the business is not being run out of those buildings.
Yes, except that, there's, there's one little, the, the, the one issue that, that I think you're flawed, and I'll, I'll use the, I, I may be wrong with, with the number, but I think it's nine ninety-one Salem Street, the, the project where they have several businesses in there.
Oh, yeah, at the front, at the very beginning of Groveland, when you, right.
The last place in Groveland, before you get to Josh, I'm on the right-hand side.
Where K's Interiors was.
Yeah, by K's Interiors, sure. All right, now, now the difference, I agree with everything you say, except that the difference is that that particular building is in a business zone, okay? So the uses of that building, and the, and the square foot of that building is, is in business zone. I'm gonna go back and reiterate, because I'm not sure that, that everyone here has got the message that this particular project is in a residential zone, and we're doing a nonconforming use of that, so, so it, it requires a, a much further review of the project.
Agreed.
Okay? So when, when someone comes to the board and says, "This is what I got," I don't, like I said, I've been there ten years, but I, I don't know, and I'm, and I'm not gonna say to you that you're lying, but if you're gonna present this to me, and I can tell you that I said to the person, I said, "What do you want?" Because, because what, because, one, one of the other ones, I can tell you right now, the language that I use under lighting is cut-off luminaire, okay? That I've been using since I, I was in Brunswick ten years ago, in, in, in conditions of approval. Cut-off luminaire, it's nothing but a box light, the light goes down, doesn't go out. Okay, that I had talked to, wrote down, I wish I had it here, I don't have, but we can get it. I can show you, but I write down stuff, and Julie types it up. And when I write it down, as I'm going through, I'm talking to the person to say, "How many employees you want? I only want two. You know what, you think you might, three? You may wanna want three, so we'll put three down, so that, you know, if you hire another one, we don't have a problem. How many square foot you gonna hire?" You know, I mean, you know, "Oh, what about their storage, you may want," you know, and we did, and that's when I said, "What's the square footage?"
In fact, let me just interject, because I specifically remember in that meeting, I was sitting here, and we said, "What's the square footage?" And nobody knew. So we said, "Okay, well, let's take all the buildings and multiply them." So I sat here while he talked, and I sat, and I added them all up, and I said.
That's what happened.
Fifty-seven thousand sixty-six, is that the number? Yes, that's the number, that's the number we.
That's, that's allowance of storage, square footage of storage, not building area.
No, 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 building area.
Well, that's, that's what that said, building area, to me, when they say, "A building is forty by one-twenty, a building is forty by one-twenty." I don't assume that it's fifty by twelve twenty. You see what I'm saying? It's like.
Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't measure it, I'm assuming he did, or at least had some sort of due diligence to do it.
He did have an architect based on an old plan.
Later, yeah, and so that, that happens.
This, this was, this was.
That was done based on an architect.
An architect relying on a, it appears to be a nineteen sixty plan. I've looked at the registry, I can't find it. I was told by an attorney that this is, it was a landcourt plan floating around, that never got filed, because the court didn't accept the plan, the case was dismissed, so.
Did your client rely on that in good faith?
Now, hold on.
Yes, he did.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, John, here's my notes, okay? Now, at the point when Eric found out that there was an issue, okay? And, and, and listen, you, you know, I'm not naive enough, I knew about this way, way, way before the chief wrote the letter. And I was getting calls, I was getting all kinds of information getting back to me, even my significant other, who I, who lives with, went to a, a party and came back and says, "Boy, you were, you guys are blah, blah, blah," and I say, "Hey, you don't know what you're talking about." So, I mean, I mean, it was around town that there was issues. Now, did, did Eric then come back, what you're saying, and say, "Hey, I made a mistake, we gotta, you know, I'm, I'm over?" Did that happen?
Well, my involvement started October first.
I understand.
But, but we haven't had time, really, to address those issues, other than to answer questions.
This has been, this has been going on since probably, this was March, I knew about it in May.
I can't speak for Eric.
Okay, but I'm just saying to you, if the developer knew there was issues, did he come back to the board and say, "Oh, you know, that number's wrong"? Did he do that?
You'd already issued the permit, he would've had to file for an amendment, go through the whole procedure.
Did he do that?
No, he did not.
Well, then, my question to you would be, why?
Well, that was part of our plan, but we, we, first of all, we get a notice on October first, he calls me to get involved in it, this is the first I've known about it.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying to you is that the developer knew there was an issue prior to that.
I would not use the word developer in the sense professionally, Eric Harper probably should've had a professional developer with him.
You know, this is, this goes, hold on, hold on, this goes back to last, the last meeting, when, when he sat here and he, and he was, he was saying he didn't know who was in the buildings. Now, let me tell you.
And we got you the information.
Yeah, I understand, but, but, but don't, don't sit here, John, and sit here and try to tell me that, that the developer, Eric, who's, who's a, a, a very intelligent person, didn't know who was in those buildings that night. I have apartments, I've had them for thirty years, I built, okay? I know who every tenant is in them buildings.
He knew, he didn't know who was in the specific buildings, as I recall the meeting, he could tell you who the tenants were.
Yeah, well, he didn't even know that that night.
That's why we came up with the matrix.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't even know that that night.
Quite frankly, he relied on this plan in good faith, and he probably should've asked for more footage, but he got, he got less than what he deserved.
So didn't we, but you see, my, my other point, you, you're, you're missing the big point, and, and maybe, maybe the fact that I, I did code enforcement is, is probably a detriment to the board, because I'll tell you, I have done research my entire, well, probably thirty years.
Well, that's, I spent my thirty-seven years doing it.
Doing research, and when, when I come out and I do research, and I'm saying, "Okay, let's see, oh, look at this, oh, yeah." I mean, I've had it, where, where a junkyard in a, in a different town I work would only, could only utilize five acres, and they had twenty acres.
This is a use permit to use fifty-seven thousand square feet. That's what it is, and that's, I, I would believe that would be interpreted and upheld.
Well, I disagree with you on that, but go ahead, Bill.
As everyone in this room knows, I'm a selectman, and I see one of my fellow selectmen in the back, I'm only gonna speak for myself. I held this plan up at a selectman meeting when I think Chief Lee brought it before us. He brought the building inspector in. I pointed to Building C and asked the building inspector, and I believe directed it to Mr. Harper, I said, "Is this building on the property as we speak?" He said, "It is." On camera, I told the town, "Okay, I'm happy with it, it's on the plan." I feel, I said it before, I'll say it again, I feel duped. It was not on the plan, and that's how I feel.
So it wasn't there when the plan was submitted, you're saying?
This plan was submitted on March, whatever the date was.
Yeah, March fifth, two thousand fourteen.
And the meeting was well after that date, and I asked the people in front of the town, I asked the two parties in front of me, they said the building was there. It wasn't there at that time.
I think you're missing the big issue of how important it is to this town, I mean, we had a lot of people in here, where I'm assuming are butters to that property. I mean, we don't have this many people in a zoning board meeting.
We're not that exciting.
And these people are concerned about what's going on, on that property, because it's a constant question of what's happening there.
We're trying to address questions.
And we, hold on, and we keep getting the runaround, whether it's with the, the papers, or with the language, or with the, the building numbers, I mean, it's crazy.
What, what do you want us to do? We've, we've given you the usage, we've told you the square footage, there's a variation.
I give presentations all the time, I'm prepared.
Where do they go? Where do we go from here? Well, my suggestion would be, my suggestion would be refile.
I gotta get the rebuttal.
Refile. You know there's a lot of issues here, there's a lot of problems here? Refile it. I mean, me sitting here, I don't think this board's in your favor at this point, I shouldn't, I'm speaking for myself, but refile. And this way here, we're gonna get it right. We're gonna come in here, we're gonna get it right, we're gonna get the right square footage, and we're gonna get everything right. And that's just my opinion, only my opinion. I just think there's a lot of problems with this right now, and I think we can get it right. I just think there's a lot of problems with this right now, and I think we can get it right, I thought we're gonna come in today, but now, me personally, it went from eighty, fifty-seven to eighty thousand, and now there's another problem, and like Mr. Wood just stated, every time we talk about this, more comes up and more comes up.
Mr. Chairman, I like to be heard.
Oh, yeah, because I, I wanna-
Open meeting.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Open meeting.
Hold on, hold on. Now-
Like to be heard, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have anything else that you want to say?
No.
Do you have anything else, John?
No.
So it's, yeah, I'm gonna, I just wanna, I just wanna clarify, your contention is that it doesn't matter how many square feet he has down here, he could have hundred thousand down there, but he's got an approval for fifty, and so that's all he's gonna use.
That's all he's allowed to use.
That's right, and that's all he's, no, no, listen to me again. He could have a hundred thousand square feet down there, but all, all that he's gonna use is fifty-seven oh six six.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you one more time, he has, he has, uh, sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet of building on that site, and the approval was for, for, uh, fifty-seven oh six six. So you're, you're saying tonight that the only amount of buildings, and, and we're, we're not talking about Building C, uh, that's gonna be utilized on the site would be fifty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty square feet.
As allowed by the permit right now, unless there's an amendment.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, um, I, I like to, uh, formally, I, I object to the, um, the, uh, just, you gotta give these guys the benefit of the doubt. I, I disagree with Mr. Wood, that they've come prepared, they've done everything we've asked them to do. This is a fairly new permit, they're in the first year of the permitting process, and what I've heard on this board, this is a quasi judicial board, and no one on this board should be influenced by public opinion, I'm certainly not. I don't take phone calls, I don't listen to people, I don't go like this in weather vane, whether or not I'm gonna make a decision. This is a residentially zoned area, but a legal nonconforming use is not subservient to residential. There's a legal standard, and as long as a use is not, uh, uh, more detrimental than the previous use, they've got an absolute right to this. This was a lumberyard, and there was a commercial business there that predated zoning, it probably predated everybody that's alive in this room, okay? So they have a right to use it as a business, and no politics should ever come to this board, none. And not, not one person should be influenced by any public opinion, other than what we hear at an open meeting, and we receive evidence and listen to people before us. It shouldn't be what happens outside of here.
You're a hundred percent right, except that-
So I object on that basis to how, how, what I'm hearing here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, listen, just before we, we get some people wanna speak, but I, I do wanna, for the records, you don't have anything else, John? You got anything else?
I, I would just add that, to play off of what Mr. McDonald said, the issue on nonconforming uses is the intensification issue.
That's correct.
We have, in fact, from a square footage standpoint, decreased the intensification.
Well-
The use.
Well, you know, be that as it may, now, so you, you're, you're clear that going forward, there's, there's a, there's a expansion of nonconforming use, i.e. the, the, well, actually, it's, it would be from, from, uh, the approval of fifty-seven oh six six to, uh, to, uh, flip the page here. Sixty-nine eight-eight-eight, is that, is that would be the intention?
That's counting Building C, I believe, we're not using Building C at all.
I understand, but- Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is, your contention is that, that you would refile a, uh, an amendment to the, to the existing-
Special-
Special permit, uh, correcting the numbers of fifty-seven... oh six six to sixty-nine eight-eight oh. Is that, is that correct, so we both understand? And that the, the building, uh, to occupy the building is gonna be an expansion of the use, because it is. And secondly, there's, there's a problem with the location on the lot being ten feet, with the, with the, with the setbacks fifteen, that's not grandfathered. I don't care where you come from, what time you're in, what state you're in, that's not grandfathered use, and, so we understand?
Yeah.
Okay, good, okay. I know some people wanna talk, one at a time.
You want us to get out of here?
Yeah, please.
Just wait for the table.
Whatever, whatever you wanna do.
Get out of the line of fire.
You may not, not wanna leave, because you may wanna-
No, we're just-
Answer questions.
You may wanna answer questions.
Like I said, get out of the line of fire.
We'll, we'll try to keep it, uh, now, just so you know, everyone has to speak one at a time, we're, we're on tape. And state your name. Name and address, and, uh, what you wanna talk about, and we're not gonna like, three or four people talk about the same thing, but go ahead, whoever wants to talk first, you can either come over here or over here, whichever you wanna do.
I'm Mike LaFrance, I live at, uh, One Wharf Lane.
Hold on, you, you, no, no, uh, there's a mic right there, if you, if you sit right down, and you can just sort of lean into that mic or talk to the mic, thank you.
So my name's Mike LaFrance, I live at One Wharf Lane, um, we have, uh, plenty of issues, but one of them being the expansion of the, or the continuation of the nonconforming use, because the land was abandoned by the previous owner, it sat unused for five years before it changed hands.
Yeah, hold on, let me just, let me tell you about that. It wasn't abandoned, and, and the reason it wasn't abandoned was, and, and there's case law on this, the reason it was not abandoned was because all the time that it was vacant, there was a for sale sign, and it was on the market to be sold, uh, other than the, maybe the first couple of months, so, uh, but, but, but let me just ask you, I, I do have, I do have a question, and, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm just having a-
Can I just have a follow-up to that?
Yeah, let me ask you though, while you're talking about the use, uh, during that time that it was vacant, okay? I recall driving by there, and, and there was an eighteen wheeler parked out front, would, would, you guys live in an area, would you know, any, any idea who that eighteen wheeler was?
Yeah, it was my dad's.
Huh?
It was my father's.
It was your father's?
Yeah.
Did, your father was illegally parking an eighteen wheeler on a residential zone?
How was it illegally parked? Apparently, it was an industrial zone, according to the nonconforming use.
It wasn't an industrial zone, it was a residential zone.
And parked in a, in the residential.
If you've one vehicle that you own-
So, how-
Yeah, but you don't know, that's not your lot, so anyways, I just, I just, no, no, don't, you gotta speak one at a time, go ahead, go ahead, son.
So, how is that a residential zone, if the rest of the property is in a residential, residential zone at that time?
It is.
We already had the hearing.
We, we had the hearing, you, this is-
And there's an appeal process for the hearing, if you didn't appeal, you'll-
This is, this is, yeah, this is, this is just, this is not, this is a recall, if you got issues with, with what's going on there, but as far as the permits already been done, we got some issues with setbacks and uses, if you'd like to talk about that, that's fine, but, but that's all you can talk about. We've already had, that's already, you missed it, you know, your, your parents were here that night.
I was also here.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, that, that, we're not gonna, that's not on, on for discussion. Only thing you can discuss is the use of the buildings, uh, if the lights aren't cut off, if there's, you know, too much lights, uh-
So I just wanna point-
If they're utilizing the structure beyond the, the conditions, which is seven to seven, if there's, if you, if you got people that's been here, you know, six days a week, beyond the six days a week, seven to seven, that's an issue we need to know about, uh, if the lighting is not cut off luminaire, and, uh, but other than, the use is, is not debatable here tonight.
Um, yeah, so I also wanna point out that the pole barns that were supposedly moved from where they were on a residential zone, it's a residential zone right now, where those pole barns are, and where his entrance is, and then he moved those buildings to where Building C is, which is an industrial zone. So how can he count that square footage?
Let me ask you a question, have you been here all night?
I most certainly have been here all night.
Have you been listening?
Yes.
You sure? I discussed this.
Yeah, and?
And I, and I, I discussed this very clearly, I'll, I'll discuss it again for you, young man.
Thank you, sir.
These, these buildings weren't on the plan, okay? They weren't on this plan.
Yeah, they're complete, a completely different zone.
They weren't on this-
Didn't address that zone in the meeting.
Zoning has nothing to do with it, okay? Let me just tell you, I already addressed this tonight, they weren't on the plan, we didn't discuss the fact that, that he was gonna utilize their square footage, because they weren't on the plan, it's a non-issue.
So they're coming from outside the zone and moving the square footage into the zone, and that's allowable?
There's no, you, you, no, no, there's, there's nothing coming from any other zone that's in a residential zone, totally residential zone, but the fact is, those particular buildings that he said he moved were not on here, and the board didn't take that in consideration with the fifty-seven, uh, fifty-nine, uh, let me think here.
Fifty-seven oh six six.
Yeah, fifty-seven oh six six.
Okay, well, I know there's other people that wanna make a point.
Yeah, it's got nothing to do with, with, with the approval at all.
Take all your time.
Okay, no problem, thank you. Next, you gotta come up and give your name and, and, uh-
I'm Diane LaFrance, from One Wharf Lane. Um, these are a few of the pictures I'd like to share with the board, to show the many violations that we have experienced being abutters. Many of them are here. These two are crucial to us living in residential, on the river, next to the aquifer. This has been there all summer, it's huttop, just piled up, you look out your window, this is what you see. Unfortunately, it's in black and white. It's at least fifteen feet high, it just sits there, the sand blows off it, the rain goes on it.
Can I, can I see these a little closer?
This is within twenty feet of our lot line. He just dumped it there. Those are unregistered vehicles that have been sitting there since the spring, they are a disgrace.
Is he cleaning up the huttop? What's the huttop for, the pile?
Um, we're assuming, without standing there and watching, we're assuming he stripped it from the front and dumped it in the back. He altered the front yard, as everyone can see.
Counselor Christopher?
Right here is-
What's the client's intentions with the pile, ask for?
Oh, I thought I was presenting.
Hold on, let me ask you a question, uh, you're gonna show this to us, this is gonna be for us?
If you want, I have copies, and there, and I do wanna let the board know that every picture taken has been timestamped, the originals are timestamped. I do for those, yeah, you know what I don't have, is this, and neither does the town clerk, we do not have any, um, plans, we just got this here. Oh, you got them tonight? I thought we were supposed to have them March fifth, that's what we were going on, we've never seen any, we've never seen this.
That, that plan there is, that's, that's-
That was the original, so.
That's been at the meeting.
I got the minutes from her, and I got, and that was not attached to it.
You, you probably got one that was black.
And I went to the town clerk, she has nothing from the planning board, and she has no plans.
Well, you probably saw one that is, I got a black one on it somewhere.
That's attached to his original application, Chief.
Or the ad.
I don't have it.
You probably saw this, this is, this is what was attached.
None of us, we were all in the meeting, and I requested it.
Yeah, it's, it's attached.
So now the town clerk does have a copy of that, so that all the butters can have that.
She should have a copy.
That's, that, if you got, if you got the approval, that, that was attached to it.
I do have the approval.
Well, that, that, that's part of the approval, that's attached to it.
I did not receive that.
This was on, this was at the meeting.
Yeah, that's attached to it, it is, now, let me ask you, have you read this here, the, the, uh-
Yes.
You read it?
I have a copy.
Okay, good.
So my other point is, um, if you can understand, living in residential, we were there, we've been there thirty-two years, um, Estes were wonderful neighbors, okay? They stacked the wood on the residential side with all the abutters, it was at least ten feet high, pallets of finished wood, the logs were put out back on the other side of the property, we had no equipment like this hanging around, unregistered, we had no huttop looking us, we had no, they were never open until seven o'clock at night, any night.
Well, I mean, that, that, see, that, that's part of the approval.
So, okay, so I understand that, but you didn't let us speak on March fifth.
Hold on.
And that is taped, you closed the floor, because you did not give us the opportunity, you people-
There's a legal appeals process, you didn't appeal.
Yeah, 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 you had three days to appeal.
Right, well, then, why? Because we've never been through this process, and unfortunately, if we had known that, we certainly would have done that.
Some rules for everyone.
As you see, the butters weren't even there the first meeting.
There's the same rules for everyone.
They were not, they were notified.
Okay, so we'll go with seven to seven, Monday through Saturday, it will be, it's not acceptable.
It's moot, it wasn't appealed, you're not timely.
They do not abide by that, never. They are there at six o'clock in the morning, ten minutes of six in the morning, we have, and I can tell you, tow trucks coming in and out all hours of the night, the gate is never locked, here's a, here's a thing, last Sunday, we had more traffic last Sunday morning at seven o'clock, we went up and looked at the gate like, wait a minute, the gate they tell us is supposed to be locked. This is, this is his example of a locked gate, a bungee cord, that's if the gate is locked, is closed, excuse me.
And what gate is that?
That's the one that's illegally installed, and this is on the abutter side, so right here is all the lot line to the residence.
To what, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
And he's supposed to have, this is his entrance to his business.
Hold on, no, 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 that there that you're referring to has nothing to do with the plan that we approved.
But I'm telling you, that's how he's altered it.
Well, I'm, I'm telling you that that's nothing, that has absolutely nothing to do with the board, that, that, that's, that's, that's an issue, it's a planning board issue, not a zoning board of appeals issue.
Okay, so he's in violation of that.
The only, well, hold on, hold on, the only thing that the board reviewed, the zoning board of appeals reviewed, was, was this particular point, from this point over? Anything on that side, I thought that's what that fence was, that's not, that's, has nothing to do with the board of appeals.
Right, you didn't give him a permit, you did, that-
This has nothing to do with us.
The zoning board did not allow him to ta- okay, here's another thing he did, that is not, here's the building he built, where's the one with the, um, right here, the gate, and then here's the, right here, there's over forty loads of fill, dirt, not dirt, it's not topsoil, it's filth.
And, and so what, what's your, what's your point in that?
He's in the zone that you did not give him permission to work in.
Where?
He's right up against the, um, abutters, right here.
Yeah, but you see, you, you're missing the point, from this point here, this point here, this point here, this point here, this is all that the board of appeals reviewed. That stuff there is, is a planning board issue, it's not a zoning board of appeals, we had nothing to do with it, we didn't talk about it, if they come back with a forty B, you walk up and come out and talk about it, but the only thing-
No, we're not even going as far as the forty B, we're dealing with what's going on today.
What I'm saying, well, hold on, let me, let me just finish. Let me finish. I, I'm not sure how clearer I can be, the zoning board of appeals only reviewed from this point to this point, that point, this point, this point, this point. Anything over in here is nothing to do with the board of appeals.
Okay, so this is in your zone of authorization, um, whatever you'd like to, that you went through the zoning board.
So let me make notes on this, so I'll know what we're talking about, because, uh, this here, you're saying this here-
This is on your side.
And what's, what's, what's the issues with this here?
Unregistered vehicles, and they're just sitting there in the grass, rotting out, raccoons are living in them.
They're, they're allowed to have, that's, that's called storage, I mean, they can have storage.
Sitting outside, unregistered, that's an eyesore.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry.
You can't have that in your neighborhood, in your yard.
Listen.
You can have one unregistered vehicle undercover.
It stores a structure, you know, I mean, this could be- No, it didn't, we didn't say undercover.
And what piles of lumber eyesores?
Yeah, were they un-
No.
Were they eyesores?
No, they weren't anywhere near, um, I'm seeing with it.
Pallets of bricks eyesores?
Some people would, would say-
It's subjective, it's a subjective issue.
Some people would say that these, these trucks, these trucks are nice, so, listen, one, one at a time, now, come on, if you're gonna talk like that, you have to leave.
The trucks are not nice, you need to go down and clean them.
But that's, that's not, that's not an issue, what's this here? Built a road?
Yeah, he went, uh, he took the fencing out.
Now, where, where are we here?
You're, uh, standing with your back to the river, you're right where the power lines are.
No, I wanna, I wanna see, wait, hold on, hold on. Where are we here?
Like, in the back, here, you mean?
Exactly, exactly.
That road, that road is where?
Right in here.
Is it, there's a, a road beneath it?
He just took-
At, at it, what's this here? Is that the road he's talking, you're talking about?
No, he, it goes this way.
It's a parking lot.
No, he, you can see that it's new, and he even removed the fencing.
No, no, I, no, you gotta tell me, wh- where is it on, on, on the plan?
I don't know on the plan, I don't know, I know what it's in real life, that's what it is, I do not read plans, I do not know where it is on that plan.
Okay.
Is this road behind you, if you're looking out that fence?
It's not in huttop, this, this-
Is it gravel?
This door that he moved is not, no, it's dirt, it's sand, he took a, like a bulldozer and plowed it right out.
Well, I, from the, from the plan's perspective, right, okay, so here's the front of where Estes was, right? So these are all the power lines, so if you walk all the way down to the end, is that where you're referring to?
There's a gate here, there's a gate somewhere in here.
Okay, so, but this is the area you do mean, then?
And it's down, yeah, it's down in the aquifer, right down here, it probably is, it's not an existing, we saw him do it, it's, it's not, it wasn't there.
Okay.
So that's why I can't honestly answer you, where is it here?
Okay, well, well, just, just so you know-
Just trying to get a, is it in this area or that area, that's what we're trying to find.
I wish you'd please come down and visit, you know, the pitches don't do it justice.
Just so you, well, no- Hold on, see, it, it, it isn't the board of appeals', uh, uh, job to go down and, and, and visit it, and I, I've got a letter that I'm gonna read after, which we have, in the town of Groveling, we have a conservation committee.
We've been there.
And they, and they've been down there, I'm gonna read the letter that, that, that addresses a couple of issues, okay?
I have a copy of it.
So that is, that's not an issue before the board of appeals, now, what does this, this picture here depict?
What I'm telling you, that's another way he altered the land, these are unregistered trucks, this one's sitting on a block, that's residential.
I understand, but that's, this is cold storage, it's cold storage, that was approved, what, what else is, what are you talking about?
How many unregistered vehicles are we allowing on this property?
Uh, they may, they, they may like them as, uh, they could be antique vehicles, and, and the guy has a, uh-
Oh, they're chunks, come down and build.
Well, that's, that's the ID beholder, I've, I've been through this stuff, the, the guy, I had guys keeping Corvairs in the backyard, several of them, and, and they, they weren't, uh-
Vegas.
Yeah, Vegas, and they, but that's, you know, someone likes them, that's what they have. Now, this here is not in, in our purview, uh, and what does this depict here? These two, these here, oh, that, this is the building we're talking about, the new building? These two, yeah, well, we're, we're addressing that, and, so this whole thing here, the new building, we're addressing that, what is this one over here?
The one with the water?
Yeah, what's, what's that building?
Now, this is, um, he's, this is how close he is to, uh, this is just part of the overflow of the brook, the river's right here, he's on a corner.
Yeah.
And, um, he's got a building right here that he's gonna use, and nobody can say-
And was the, is, is that building right there?
I cannot say, I do not read-
It's a conservation issue, it's not before, it's not, it's not our jurisdiction.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, that's right. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the conservation, 'cause that, that's their issue, and I, I suspect this is the same building, different picture, what does this here do with here?
So I guess your issue is, this is, he took the sidewalk, there's no sidewalk, and now when you, nobody is using this entrance, which is your side of the permit, this is the entrance to this business.
Yeah.
They have never used this, this is, is closed off, they use this gate, which, it shows down at the bottom.
Yeah.
He moved-
We can talk about that.
He moved the entrance from one side to the other, what the entrance now does is all the vehicles come in and out our backyard.
Yeah.
Just constant, and they have never, ever-
And, what, this is the same thing?
That's the entrance, exactly.
This is over here, that's over here in a white car.
So this is what he should be using, and that's what he is using.
We can take care of that, all right.
And the lights are incredible.
Okay.
There are four huge spotlights, LED lights.
Where are they, on, on, here's the plan.
On, there's two buildings out back, they're on.
We got buildings right here, now, where, where would they be?
I have no idea, I can't really-
Well, you're not, see, you're not helping.
I'm on Wharf Lane.
Which one are you?
Wharf Lane.
All right.
Right over here.
So is it these buildings?
So I'd say it's these, 'cause what happens is, one of the lights, the furthest spotlight comes directly into our house, directly in. You walk down our hall to go out to the driveway, the light is shining in your face, you are, you're more than welcome to come and see.
So you're saying that it's not a cut-off luminaire light?
It is, it is so bright, it just drowns out, the little streetlights we have, it lights up the entire neighborhood. All the abutters have the lights on the side of their house.
They're right there, Wharf Lane.
Okay. Yeah, you, you, you live right here?
Yes.
And, and what you tell me your name was?
Diane.
No, last name?
LaFrance, I don't know any.
Good, 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 okay.
And then there's two lights up front, I believe, one of them is on the, the retail building.
Yeah.
That light is so bright, it shines all the way down to Wharf Lane.
Now, where, where is that, on, on this end?
Yes.
It's on the back of that main building, you mean?
Uh, it could be on the other corner, I don't know. It is on that building, yeah.
But it shines-
You think it's on this corner and it's shining down here?
Oh, it's, is this the retail building?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's over here on this building, on the back side, and it shines here. He has since added another floodlight in one of these, on one of these buildings, so we now have four.
And what, and is a floodlight somewhere down here, one of these buildings?
Yeah, they come straight out, they're LED lights, they're, it's brighter than the football field.
Gotcha, okay, good.
And then he has at least ten to fifteen that we can count from our side of lights just on the buildings, all the way. But the big, huge spotlights.
Now, the lights on the buildings, what do they do?
They light up the area, I guess.
Do, do they light up if someone's there, or are they there?
No, they're, all these lights are on, twenty-five lights are on, constant. They're on longer than the town, um, streetlights.
Every building has lights on it?
Is it twenty-four hours or no?
Um, it's on-
They do shut off at some point, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they shut off, um, after seven o'clock, 'cause I leave for work around there, and they're still on.
Seven PM?
AM.
Oh, AM.
No, they're on all night.
Oh, that's what I'm asking.
They, they light up, our bedrooms are upstairs, every one of our bedrooms is lit up, and it has come through room, um, darkening shades, curtains, and it's, it's unbelievable. And we're on a little dead-end street off a dead end. He is impacting our neighborhood. And now, half of this board is conservation, and the other half, I'm assuming, is you or the planning board. We have never gotten notification from the planning board that he has ever been in front of them.
Yeah, that's not a, that's not an issue that we, we have any control over, so, where, where does zoning board?
I've contacted the, um, the building inspector, I left him four messages, he called back once. Uh, he said he was in total compliance, the lights are fine, he's been there twenty times, and if you have any complaints, put it in writing.
Okay, so, let, let me ask you a question, I want you, I want to be clear. So, your issues that, that, that you, your, 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 your issues that you have with the project currently, is that we've got, uh, some area lights that are, that are shining, uh, shining on, on, uh, Wharf Street? Okay, is that correct?
On Wharf Lane and Wharf Drive.
Yeah, okay, and then, and then, uh-
Four LED spotlights.
Yeah, I got it, that's okay. And, and the other issue you have, you're saying that, that, uh, the seven to seven is being violated by, uh, six o'clock in the morning?
That gate is open, I have timestamped pictures, that gate is open before.
Okay, all right, but, but, let me tell you, if you're talking about that gate there, that's not our issue.
Well, that gate's giving them access to the lot.
It's not our issue, our issue is over here.
No, no, that one that she's talking about is the one that moved from here to here.
Mm-hmm.
He, yeah, but, oh, not here?
No, 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 no.
That's the house, yeah.
This is the main entrance, this is the one that-
There's another gate over here?
Yes.
There's a gate here, no, no, right here, not the one in the back.
No, 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 yeah, but, yeah, but, wait, wait, yeah, I'm, you know, it's right here, though. On this plan, it's right here, Mike.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah.
See, but that, but that's not-
That's the one she's talking about.
Yeah, but that's not our issue.
But that's how they're accessing it, that's what she's saying, at, at times when they're not supposed to, that's what she's talking about.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. Okay, okay, I got you, okay, yeah.
They access it all the time, they, they never use the entrance that you approved.
But, but, but I gotta, I gotta tell you- Okay, but, okay, well, we, we can address that, but, but, let me, that's not our issue, that, that's an issue, that's a planning board issue.
Okay, so however they enter, I'll present it this way, however they enter the property, they are there before seven AM.
All right.
By at least an hour.
Okay.
Okay, they are there till quarter of nine most nights, they're always there on Sundays, they have been there all four holidays. In and out, in and out, we have diesel trucks that start, we have backup alarms, six fifteen this morning, they were there.
When you, who was "they" now? 'Cause, 'cause they're, they're doing some construction on the building, now, when you say "they," is it, is it a tenant?
There's no access between seven and seven is what I'm aware of.
Well, that's, that's, that, but that's not the construction of the building, that, that's just the, the tenants utilizing the structures out back. If, if there, there's some construction going on, that's not part of our approval. I, I don't know if the town, if, if the town has-
Well, the tow truck company is in there.
I don't know, hold on, I, I don't know whether the town has, uh, an ordinance, uh, on when you can start construction, I've been in towns where they, they were seven to seven, uh, but I don't know, Groveland's not, not an issue that the zoning board. The, the, I know there's construction going on, if, if these trucks are coming before seven to work on this building, that's-
They're both pulling out their landscaping trailers.
But if it's, but if it's a building down here, then that's an issue.
Oh, yeah, yesterday morning, there's, um, a landscaper at ten, I have pictures at home, ten minutes of six, he's pulling in with a truck. He starts the red, um, six-wheeler, that's diesel, that sits there and runs for twenty-five minutes, however long. Then you hear it backing up, going forward, then he moves, he's, all this before seven o'clock. There's a landscaper in there, or it must be a builder, 'cause he has a white, closed-in trailer, he's in and out, so. I mean, and the lights, and the operating hours, and it's extreme, um, impact on our neighborhood.
Yeah.
As you can see, all the abutters, and those that couldn't be here asked us to speak on their behalf.
Okay.
The impact is unbelievable, and the value of our real estate, where's it headed? I mean, would you buy a home that had these cars that you're allowing to sit here, because he thinks they may be an antique someday? Unregistered, on blocks, and, and there's also, these are what the abutters see, these three pitches are what the abutters see. It's really nice having a, you know, a cookout, a family cookout, and they drive by this to get into your street, and then, you know, at the cookout, we have this to view, the cars, and then, uh, you know, they're working over there. Labor Day weekend, they're working, the holiday.
Can you tell me the location, the exact location of, of those three vehicles on this plan?
No, but Michael, could you?
Yeah, I can come up.
I, I can't read that, I, I have actual pitches here, on that plan.
So, this is in front of the old office, which is, uh, this building, I believe?
That's where the cars are, that's what he was asking, those trucks?
With these cars or these cars?
No.
This is the old mill building, so this is J and I, uh, in between J and I, um, and these-
Where are they?
J and I, I think that's what that says right there, J and I.
They're, they're in between this building?
Well, yeah, I mean, you can see the side. Yeah, they're on the side, no, they're on the side.
They're over here.
It's, the picture's being taken from this angle, so, you're seeing two sides of the building, and it's hard to see this left.
This is from, it's right.
You know, we, I need to know what-
Now, one of these pitches did we trespass?
I, I gotta know what you're talking about.
This is taken from a lot-
Well, you know, I'm trying to show you on a-
This is taken from our lot line.
So, so, it, it's right here, is this, is this where you think it is?
Right, I would guess, only, I'm guessing, because here's our home, this is non-existent, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So, it's a direct shot, and that's where the lights would be, is over here.
Okay, okay, I got you, I got you.
Okay, this was taken from, as you can see, the fence, we did not trespass on any of these pitches.
Got you, no problem, I understand, okay.
Okay, this is what we see every time we move around.
You know, you, I, I, I don't think I'm being abrupt with you, I'm just trying to figure out where it is so I can address the issues, but I, but I-
Yeah, and I have to be honest, I can't read that.
Without, without knowing where it is, I can't address it.
Okay, so here's how I look at it, stand on my back porch, okay, and this is exactly what you see.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay, stand on the ba-, same back porch, look a little to the left, which is what everybody on Wharf Drive sees, is the big pile of, uh, hut talk.
But it's on this, it's on, it's right, it's over here?
Yeah, over here.
No, there's buildings there, it's gotta be over here.
Well, he just dumped it, I don't-
Yeah, but you see, my, my point, see-
So, where would it be, there's the building right there.
See, you're miss, you're missing the point.
There's the building.
I understand, okay.
So, I'd say it's on that zone.
Well, I, not necessarily, it's all the same property, now, what, what I'm saying to you is, I think that what's, what's happening is that the, 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 most of those pitches, other than maybe one, two, three, four, maybe, uh, are on, on this white part, which is, which is the planning board. Now, there's, I, I understand that there may be a, a plan going before the board now for approval of these buildings, site plan approval, that's where-
We haven't been notified.
Well, I, I don't know, I, that's, you, you needed to talk to the clerk and, or-
But here's the building right here, so that has to be in our jurisdiction.
Well, I, well, no, it-
Look it, it's right on top.
Yeah, but I, I don't know how much distance it is between that and the building, that, that's not, it's not clear as to how far-
Well, then maybe somebody should take a walk down and see.
But, but anyways-
I mean, there's hut talk there, and the building is right there, here's the building.
We're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss that right now, uh, when you're done, is, is, do you have anything else you want to discuss on that?
Um, not that, Mike-
Yeah, how about your notes, do you want to look at your notes anymore?
Um, no, you say the gate's not, and the real estate values are a very big concern.
Yeah.
And we did, we did report that there was somebody living in that building in the summer.
That's been taken care of, yeah.
Right, exactly, that was addressed.
I'm glad you did.
Months later.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak?
Thank you.
Uh, actually, go ahead.
My name is Fred Parker, I own four four two Main Street, I am Parker Fence, I'm not a resident, I don't live there. Uh, it does affect me. Estes abandoned it basically ten years before by not fixing roofs, and, and the, it was going into decay, and I have a view of almost every building. I have like five hundred feet of frontage that looks every square inch into Estes. Any building construction takes a long time, every single one, I do two thousand jobs a year, and every single neighbor wants to know, when's it gonna be finished? It's always the answer. As the gate, I can talk about the gates, 'cause I do have a contract for the gate. The gate was removed on the left side to work on the A building, so they could drive around it with, I would call it a, uh, extension fork truck and a boom lift. Uh, a new gate has already been contracted for the left side, it will be electric, so that only tenants can go in there, there's no place for, uh, kids to go at night, uh, it will be fenced off. The fence was bumped out on the right so that they would have safety room to take down the sheds. You do not want to take down a building that's that old next to a fence. I moved that fence to the street for safety purposes. Now, we are putting an electric gate on the left, and you have to trench from what you call, I call the lumber desk, I don't know what you call it, all the way over to the front building for electric and control. So that the computer that will control the gate is gonna be in the front and the lumber desk. So, trenches had to be made, can't drive over them while you're putting in electrical, uh, it's been a slow process. I don't know what the electrician's schedule is, I know that we've been working on it for four months. Uh, a little here, redesign the fence, move it over, so they could take this down, move it back, so they can work on the back of this A building. The gate will be on the left side, it will be electric, it will have no access for anybody except a tenant, and the fire department will have their own access system that will let them in.
So, are, are you, you're, so you're, you're telling the board that, that you've been engaged by Eric Harper to work on gates for the project?
Yes.
Okay.
One gate.
And that, uh, the gate on the left, which was the approval by the board, is not one-
Is the one I'll be putting.
It isn't there now.
It isn't there now. It, it is, uh, a fence will be going up next week, and then the gate right after.
Yeah, okay, you're not the right person to address this to, but, but if I, if I could, John, uh, what we discussed earlier? The approval of the board was for a gate on the left side. Nothing was talked about a temporary gate on the right side.
I wasn't there, but I'll take your-
I understand, I'm, I'm just telling, and, and now you got neighbors complaining, rightly so, that what was approved is not being utilized.
Well, listening to Mr. Parker, my understanding was because of the construction, they couldn't put in a permanent gate, so how would they access the property?
Well, you know what, this should have been done before they leased it. Okay, that, that's really pretty easy, you know, I'm, I'm, you're, you're intelligent guy, I think you could figure that out pretty easy.
It's twenty-twenty, too.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I, I suspect you could figure that out pretty easy. You know, you and I are both the same age, and, you know, we've, we've been-
I'm younger.
Yeah, we, we've been, yeah.
How quick, how quickly can the gate get put back where it's supposed to be?
Yeah, we, so, yeah, but I, but this, I, I know, I know that it's been like this for a while, I mean, my son lives right at the street, so, so I, I, I-
I thought it's because of the hut topping that was being done.
I did, too, but, but-
That's what I thought, too.
But, but, but the fact of the matter is, the, you, you, see, what should have happened here, and why we have all the people down here, is that this should have been discussed the night that it came in, saying, oh, by the way, I'm putting an electric gate, I'm gonna have to put a temporary gate in over here, and we could have written it down, and, and you know what, then you don't get blindsided. You know what that means, being blindsided, you remember that, yeah? When you go to court, and all of a sudden you find a witness that, oh my God, where'd he come from, it wasn't a discovery, oh, boy, how did that happen? Well, this is what happens, you come in, and, and the neighbors come and says, hey, they're utilizing over here. Well, that's not what we talked about. In order for him to utilize the, 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 the land, he was gonna actually sit on the left side, and all of a sudden, he's actually on the right side. The fact that he's putting a gate in, I don't know, that's, that, where does it say, where, what does it say in his approval that, oh, oh, by the way, well, two or three months, we're gonna be utilizing the other side, running right down the side of this, these, this, these back of these people driving in and out, right above these abutters, where does it say it here? It wasn't discussed, I know you weren't there, but this is what the board has, this is why we're here, you know that, you, you've been an attorney for puberty, you know how it works. I'm not trying to give anyone a hard time, but boy, you, you, you know, you, you know, we're, we're not kids. None of us here are kids, we're all grownups, I don't see any kids here, so he should, you know, he, he's gotta be a big boy, tell us what's happening. You know, don't, don't leave everything up in the air, because then all of a sudden, this is where we're at, we're, we're in a situation where people are upset, justifiably so, and, uh, you know.
All I can say is we'll try to get the electric gate in as quickly as possible, alleviate-
Well, I, with an I, with, and all I can say is that it shouldn't be utilized on the other side till you get the gate in, guess what will happen then?
No access.
Yeah, no, no.
Now, he'll have to use the lift.
Yeah, guess what, you drive in, and, and you use, you use what's there, you put a temporary gate in, that's what you do. You don't drive trucks down beside these people's houses, they're already, they're already upset, why, why irritate even more?
My client has heard you loud and clear.
Okay, good, thank you. Thank you, anything more?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I think this project is fabulous. It has growing pains.
Listen, I, I, I prefaced it, I'm not, I'm not, it's nothing to do with the project, do a fine job.
Well, I, I have an act because of what the board did to me here, this same board.
Yeah, well, I don't know anything about that, and that, that's, I don't know too many years.
I, I, I'm not gonna take short-sightedness of a board over a long sight of what it will look like.
Well, you know, listen, you know what? The town of Groveland, whether, whether you realize it or not, has what they call, call a zoning ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And in that zoning ordinance, there are regulations.
I know there are.
Okay? If you don't like the regulations, you change them, but this board here is here to enforce the regulations, that's what we're here for.
I understand.
And if you don't like that, you change them, period, that's the way it works.
How long will it take to install a gate?
Have to set the posts, have to have the electrician pull the conduit, the control, a week and a half to two weeks.
Months?
Yeah, but, but-
Week and a half to two-
Is that gonna happen before the frost?
There's no, there's no reason-
I can dig straight through the frost.
There's no reason that, that, that gate can't be used and just put a, put a chain across there.
Chain is dangerous.
You put, you put a chain across there with some colors?
Chain is dangerous, there are lawsuits all over the country of kids getting-
Well, you know what, then you use Jersey barriers with, with sawhouses, whatever, it, it needs to utilize that left side, period.
Could you, could you shut off the right side? You must have temporary fence, and they use it on construction sites all the time, put a temporary fence in there with a open and closed gate for the time being, that will make the neighbors-
On the left side? On the left side?
On the left side.
We're ready to install. We're getting ready now, we're waiting for the electrician to finish.
But it's, but it's been this way for months.
It has to do with other things like the asphalt to do the project so it looks seamless that, that electrician, for him to have the time to do the trench.
You're the wrong person for me to talk to, because the fact is-
Yes, I am. I'm, I'm the one putting the fence in, but I can't do it until they say it's on the schedule.
So you say you're gonna have the fence in a week? One week?
Weather permitting, yeah, one week. We're gonna set the posts.
You have it in stock already, in hand? You have the fencing in hand already?
All in stock.
Ready to go?
Ready to go. Operator, controls, safeties.
All right. You have anything else you wanna say?
Nope.
Anyone else wanna speak?
Have a nice day.
Go ahead.
My name's Robert O'Handley, I'm on the planning board and also the board of health. I need to clarify something. The planning board, Eric Harper came in front of us last year, I think it was, months ago, for the conceptional, and it was an informative look at his conceptional, he was going around to the boards. We expected him to come back to us for a site plan review, which he never did. So on our site plan reviews, we entertained thoughts from all the boards, board of health, water department, and whatever, and I don't understand how it got this far without him coming back with a site plan so that we could have held hearings and address all these problems. So my thoughts are that you should start this all over again and have him do a proper site plan review with the planning board. We should have been involved right at the beginning.
But, but, uh, does, does the ordinance ask for that?
I believe so. The planning board does a site plan and you people do a site plan.
What, what section are you referring to?
I'll have to look it up, I haven't-
I got the ordinance right here, you wanna look it up? You know, you can't, you can't come into a meeting and sit here and tell us that, that they should have come to the board unless you can tell me under what section of the ordinance they need to adhere to.
All PUDs, site plans should come before the planning board.
This wasn't a PUD.
Well, site plan for this particular plan that he was submitting to us should have came in front of us for a site plan.
But, but, under what jurisdiction? Because, because nothing was changed in-
I haven't got it on the top of my mind, but I'll, I'll look it up and get it back to you.
Well, it's not in this ordinance here, because I've, I've looked that question up. It's not in this ordinance that, that, that is for the town of Groveland. It's not in there. Okay?
Don't, don't you think this would have answered a lot of questions for the neighbors and everybody if they had a site plan review?
Listen, you've been, you've been sitting here, haven't you? Did you hear me earlier?
Oh, yes.
Okay? We're only here, there's an ordinance, that's all we're gonna, we're gonna enforce the ordinance. We're not going beyond, above and beyond, we're just gonna enforce what the ordinance says.
What I'm saying is it shouldn't have got that far.
Do you think you should have? Absolutely, absolutely you should have, but it doesn't say it in the ordinance, and then if it doesn't say it, you don't have to do it. Okay? Now, the other half, this, this white half here, yeah, whatever he's gonna do there, unless it's a 40B, he has to come to the board. 40B, he doesn't. So, you know, that's where the ordinance is.
On another note, as the chairman of the board of health, I'm highly concerned with any injection wells or any drains. An injection well is a hole deeper than the circumference of the inlet. Now, on all these buildings, you know, I wanna be sure that there's no drains in them. Also, as far as all the gasoline being stored and everything else, has to have retainer wall around it that will hold half of what the material, the gallons is, and fire lockers and things like that.
You need, you need to check that out because there, there is a provision in the ordinance which allows for a certain amount of gallons that doesn't need, it, it doesn't require encapsulation.
But the site plan review should have came in front of the board of health too.
But, but, well, but this doesn't require a site plan review. Now, 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 hold on, hold on. Now, you were, you could have come to the meeting the night that we talked about the special permit, and you know what would have happened if you'd voiced those concerns? It'd have been right in here. Okay?
Yeah.
I can tell you-
Through, through the twenty years I've been on the planning board, the communication between the boards hasn't been good and we've rectified that now.
Well, listen, they're posted out front, they're posted out front, we meet the, the first Wednesday of the month, you could have come to the meeting if you'd had some concerns, you could have discussed it at that, that time, and I can guarantee you, it would have been in this-
We expected him to come back in front of us, the planning board.
Well, if the project was put through as a industrial park, it probably would have required to go to you, am I correct when I say that? It was put through this board as a storage facility.
No, but, no, it, it was a, a, a non-conformal use, it was a continuation of a non-conformal use. You know, in all due respect, I'm not, I'm not giving you a hard time, but listen, this isn't the forum to be talking about what, what should have happened. It should have, you should have been at the meeting and said, hey, look at, these, this well that you're talking about, we, and I would have said, okay, number seventeen, boom, 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 boom. That's when you do it.
An hour and a half ago, you said that you were gonna contemplate whether having him start it over again or whether you were gonna pass it the way it is.
No, I, no, I, no, I, I said, I don't know what's gonna happen. I, I said, I said we could-
You gave a couple of alternatives and one of them was to start over.
No, no, one of them, no, no, not me, I didn't say that. We said we could recall the permit.
Recall, right.
That's right, recall it. What, what that, what that means is you can't come back for two years, it's a dead issue. If we recall this permit tonight, it's a dead issue, you can't do a thing for two years. That's a recall. All right? Now, an amended, uh, special permit could, could add on some conditions. However, I, I, I don't think that the conditions that you're talking about is appropriate because that's not what we're talking about.
How many times did you just say to that lady that was up there, she should have went in front of the planning board?
That, well, that's because of this other issue, the other side, the white side.
All right.
That's a planning issue.
When it comes to-
When it comes to you, that's your issue. The, the ZBA is this side, that's a planning issue.
Right.
And so what she was talking, well, all the pictures she had was over on this side that didn't come before, that's not us.
The permit doesn't apply to that.
The, the, the permit only applies from this point here, the gray, the gray area. So the other white area is a planning board issue. It's a simple, it's, we're not trying to-
It wasn't before us and it, and it's not before us.
And it's not before us. Okay. So, I mean, it's not that we're trying to give anyone a hard time, but that just isn't, that's, you know, it's not, it's not the board.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that no one's been in front of us except the conceptual informational plan he brought to us.
Well, I have a, I have a letter that says that they're, that they are before you, so someone's-
They haven't come before us yet.
Haven't been filed yet. The engineer is finishing the plans and will file as soon as the plans are ready. We anticipated hopefully late November, early December, but it is in the process. I'm looking at that.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Joe, hold on. You know what? There's rules and regulations, you only have one selectman to speak at a meeting. Okay?
I, for the record, I wouldn't, I'm not, I'm not speaking representing an interest or a consensus.
I know, but you can't, you're, you're a selectman, you, you, you know, the rules are you, only one can speak, and, and we've had one speaking already. Is anyone else who wants to say something that hasn't spoke?
Diane LaFrance, I would just like to say that, oh, I'm sorry, I thought I was loud enough. I would just like to say that when we were at the March fifth, twenty fourteen meeting, Mr. Freer did say that the planning board has agreed with this project and they should go forward with it, and it is on tape.
Well, I, I know that someone, someone was sitting right over where this gentleman is, but I'm not sure it was him, I don't, yeah, yeah, it was, it was, it was Freer, it wasn't Bob.
It was, because-
It was Freer, yeah. No, you're right, you're, you are right. I recall the gentleman, and he said that he was in favor of that because they reviewed it and they thought it was hunky-dory. Yes, you're right.
Exactly, and they said-
That might have been his personal thing, but it wasn't the board's.
No, he spoke on behalf and he was representing the board.
He spoke on behalf of the, of the planning board.
And he said all boards were in agreement, and when I contacted conservation, being so concerned with our water and the river coming over, conservation said the same thing they said. He just walked through, we signed nothing, we know nothing about it.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Conservation has come on the property since being notified, DEP has come on the property. So we were not informed of facts on the March fifth meeting, and the floor was closed before we were finished presenting.
Is anyone who wants to speak that hasn't spoke? Come right up.
Real quick, because we've already talked about it. Jim LaFrance, one wall flame. To do with the lighting, in the, the last meeting we had had that I was there on the fifth, you had said existing cutoff luminar.
Cutoff luminaire.
Yeah.
I got it.
And existing too, what, was it there from the beginning, correct?
That's right.
Which were two outside lights.
Yeah.
And now there's at least ten.
We're, we're gonna address that.
Okay.
Okay. Now, be, before I talk to you again, John, I want, I just wanna read so that, so that everyone put it on the record. I do have a letter that, that just got passed to me tonight, and it's addressed to Eric W. Harper, trustee of Estes Park Realty, Eight Federal Way, Groveland, Mass. And this is from the Conservation Commission. This letter is to follow up the Groveland Conservation Commission's visit to your facility at four forty-one Main Street in Groveland on October seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen. That morning, we met with you and Larry Ogden and visited the entire site, including the two-hundred-foot buffer zone to the Merrimack River, which is area of jurisdiction under the Groveland Wetland Protection by law and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. Our concerns were that there were, there should be no building activity within the buffer, no dumping of materials within the buffer, and no further disturbance of the buffer zone. It has been reported to the commission that these activities were taking place on a property potentially within the two-hundred-foot buffer. Upon inspection, we found the following activities taking place within the buffer zone. One, there had been some exterior improvements and work performed on one or two existing buildings within two-hundred feet of the river. Two, there had been landscaping, including walls, marks, pathways completed within two-hundred feet of the river. Three, a number of boats in states of disrespe, disrepair, disrepair were parked within two-hundred feet of the river. The commission has received no notice of this work or storage in the area of jurisdiction, nor have we issued any permits for these activities. We order you and, and the trust to stop all activities within the buffer zone immediately and until a hearing is held and a permit is issued for said activities. On site that day, you agreed to stop all activities. The commission is requesting a delineation of the buffer zone on the property and a mitigation plan for any and all activities that have occurred within the last year or will occur within the buffer zone. These plans shall be presented to the commission no later than December first, two thousand and fourteen, and discussed with us at a hearing in December. At that time, we will discuss permanent measures to secure the buffer and prevent erosion and flood damage. Thank you for your cooperation in this matter. We look forward to receiving your plans and discussing the resolution. Please call our office at nine seven eight, eight nine one, five three six one if you have any questions and require any further information. Sincerely, Michael Dempsey, Chairman. That's for the record. Now-
So what does he want us to do?
Nothing, I just, I'm writing that for the record. Now, now, what I, what I would like to say, and, and I would like to address, John, I think that the people here have a legitimate complaint regarding lights. So I don't know whether we, we should make a motion to, to, uh, order you to, to change the lights, the, the issue on the seven to seven is an issue, the entrance is an issue, or whether we should make a motion to just, uh, pull the permit and have you wait for two years and, and cool your jets and, and see if you can come into compliance in a couple of years. I, I don't know what, what, what the, what the issue is. So I'm just wondering if, if we should, if I should make that motion, John, or, or what do you think I should do? I mean, I, I'm at a loss, I mean, I, my gut-
Tom, does someone else want to speak in the corner too?
No, I already asked, I already asked, I mean, we're, we're going, I'm moving on. It's, uh, after ten o'clock.
Like I indicated-
I got to judge what they want.
Came onto this game, this is the game. I understand the concerns of the neighborhood. I fully agree the value of a site plan approval because in that way, all the different boards contribute to what made comments, the neighbors can pick up on those comments, add their comments, that can be added to a site plan. The site plan brought back here presents this board with satisfactory issues with regard to the site, then you just get into the uses of the property. Obviously, we don't want a recall. That's just gonna lead to situations that go beyond this building, go beyond this town. I think you know what I'm talking about. I would request, what I would propose, that we're going to go to the plant, Conservation Commission, at least the engineer indicates, the plans are gonna be ready for that meeting. That's what I've been told. We plan to file for site plan approval, like I said, trying to make the early December or mid-December meeting, whenever they can accommodate us. I don't think they're all that busy, so hopefully when the plans are ready this month, we'll file. I would ask that we go through site, site plan approval and then come back and file the appropriate relief, perhaps by amendment of the permit, get more neighborhood input, and we can deal with some of these issues of lighting. Once again, I mean, I can ask Eric to get on, supposedly he had his electrician go down and look at the lights, and electrician reported he didn't think there was a problem. Apparently, there is a problem.
Well, if, if there's floodlights, that's not a cutoff luminaire light.
Yeah, yep.
You know?
But that, that's my proposal-
Yeah, and if he's open seven, seven, and you see, see this, to me, I, I see this. I'm gonna go back, I'm, I'm gonna, this is the last time I'm gonna say it. It's, I, I promise, it's a residential zone, okay? It's not an industrial zone. You gotta be careful what you do in this residential zone, okay? When I say careful, you gotta be very careful. It's not a, it's not a commercial zone. When, when, when the approval said cutoff luminaire and seven to seven, it means seven to seven. It doesn't mean get there at six. Now, all bets are off, if, if it's a contractor working on a building, trying to get it done, I understand that. But if it's people coming into those buildings out back at six o'clock in the morning, that's in violation of, of the permit, and it's, it's a flagrant in-your-face, we don't care, we're gonna do, hey, this is just a piece of paper, and that's what I don't like.
We hear you.
Okay? That, that's what I, that's what I'm upset about, and I think the board's upset about that. Where, is it, does it look better? Absolutely. Is it good for the town? Absolutely. But in the future, I will tell you right now, in the future, every single person that goes into them buildings is gonna have to come back for board to get approval, because, because we're gonna have to approve the use of the, every structure. I tried to do it the other way, to try to let, let, but, but other, other possels in town have done that.
That could be done with an amendment and new conditions.
That, that's gonna be the new one, that, that, everything that comes in here has to come before the board, and it's gonna be a slow process, but, but the board's gonna have to have input from the people, and everything that goes in there is gonna have to come for the, for the board for approval in the future. That's, that's gonna be in there, whether we recall it or, or do an amendment. So what you, what you think should happen is that you think that we should, again, table it?
I, I would suggest that we come back for a status report as to site plan approval for conservation at your next meeting.
Okay. But, but, and I agree with that, except that I think that some of the issues, i.e. the location of the entrance, has to be changed immediately, if not sooner. Okay? Keep it away from the people. Secondly, the, and, and if you don't wanna use a chain, you can use temporary fence and, and or, get some Jersey barriers with some sawhouses, whatever you gotta do, get the, get it over on the side where it's supposed to be, and, and eliminate these lights, which, which really is not, is, is an issue. And, and the seven days, seven, seven, six days a week, I mean, you know, that's gotta stop, you know?
Well, we have to stay within the seven to seven.
Seven to seven, six days a week. Not six o'clock.
Not Sunday.
Not Sunday.
Not Sunday?
Non-holidays.
And, uh.
But you should put a timeline on those four issues, like two weeks, three weeks.
No, I said ASAP.
Well, ASAP is.
Yeah, today.
Counselor, when do you propose the status?
Well, I think the next meeting, at least I could come back and report where we're at. Hopefully, we'll have everything filed.
But, but, John, I mean, the, these things should be done ASAP.
Well, I'm, I'm saying not ASAP, I'm saying two weeks, not just as soon as possible.
Well, no, I mean, I think, I mean, the entrance should be done tomorrow.
Right, that's what I mean, you should put a timeline on it.
The entrance should be done tomorrow, the, the 7 to 7 should be done as you leave tonight, okay? That, that's done already. I mean, that, that should be done, everyone should be called or whatever. And then the light issue should be two weeks on, on the lights, you know, and, but that's just a matter, they could shut, shut the lights off. I mean, I, you know, until they get them repaired.
Okay, 7, you want that done immediately, so it should be done immediately.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, the, the 7 to 7 is, as you walk out, you guys should be shaking hands and, and saying, he should be telling you that I'll, I'll take care of it tomorrow morning. And as far as the gate, take those cones out of the way and start utilizing the proper entrance. And if you have to, if you have to get some sawhouses, whatever.
Is there any way, is there any way that Mr. Harper and you and Mr. Ogden can meet with the neighbors and have a neighborhood meeting somewhere?
I'd be happy to.
Well, I, I think he suggested that's gonna happen when you go for the site plan.
They'll all be invited to the site plan review, and that's where the comments and working things out.
Saying to try and get this thing running smoothly beforehand, before the meetings, you can hear out there.
I would say, I would be happy to meet with these folks.
We contacted Mr. Harper on the lights. He said the electrician, and nothing changed. He didn't even give us a follow-up call as to how was the lights working, how was the electrician. We contacted him so that we didn't have to come to the board. The, the lights are just unbelievable in that gate, and he knew about it, he personally spoke with him.
What can we do moving forward to solve the problem?
Well, I'm trying to let you know how we tried working with it, and that side didn't go along.
Yeah, John, John, I think, I think that, you know, that, I mean, as far as, this isn't our jurisdiction. I, I think that the pile, and I don't know if you saw the picture, but there is a pile of asphalt to the right, which I prob.
That's gonna be removed within about 10 days.
Yeah, okay.
From the construction up front.
So, I, I, so, what, you know, I, I, I wish if we could do something in a more formal way, maybe you could write a letter to us tomorrow that the, that the pile of dirt will be removed within 10 days, that the entrance.
Two weeks for the entrance?
No, no, the, no, no, the entrance tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
Yeah, and take, take down those cones, use the entrance to the left, and I don't, you know, you can come up with some sawhouses, whatever. 7 to 7, as we speak right now, nothing goes in there, 7 to 7. Now, I do recall we talked about emergencies. You know, if, if someone's got a, a breakdown on a plow, and he has to go get another plow in the middle of the night because it's snowing, that's okay. Okay?
Those are one-offs, though, that's not on a regular basis.
No, 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 you know, we, we talked about that, you know, everyone understands emergencies, you know, if he, if he's got a plow in there for, for, for later on, but it broke down, he's gotta go get it, okay. But on a regular basis, 7 to 7, six days a week. And then the, the light issue, you got two weeks to, to correct the lights.
Can he shut them off in the meantime, please?
I'm not sure, I, I don't know how they work.
It's part of the new law. He has the fencing on the power lines wide open, he removed the fencing.
Hold on, I'm, I'll, I'll ask, I'm not sure about that. Maybe you want to ask him, Eric, I don't, I don't, are they on light, are they on, are they on motion, or what are they on? Light, light detectors?
They're on, they're, they're on automatic controls, yeah.
Timers?
On the dust.
Timers?
No.
On them, each, each, each sensor, yeah, yeah.
They're all, they're all heading down. I mean, there's a couple of that, that are.
Yeah, floodlights don't head down, floodlights still gotta light out, I mean, cutoff luminaire goes.
Not, there's nothing on that side of the lot. I sent the electrician down there tonight, and he said, I don't, I don't know what they complained about.
Yeah, I'm going, I'm going down.
We invited him.
Hold on, hold on, no, no.
Well, let me, let me suggest.
Just one person.
Maybe the electrician should meet with these folks at nighttime to.
He did come, no, we talked, and he sent them.
Did you talk with the, talk with the electrician?
Directly.
Okay.
And he said he would try to change the direction of the lights.
Right, listen, you know, two weeks, two weeks in the light, tell me two weeks.
But it's only supposed to be two lights.
Cutoff luminaire.
No, no, the cutoff luminaire, you can have as many cutoff luminaire lights that, that you have, but they, they gotta be cutoff luminaire, and the cutoff luminaire is.
I'm not, I'm not an expert in lighting, but I assume that can be done rather easily.
Yeah, I mean.
It's a different fixture.
A cutoff luminaire is a box light that does this. I mean, they come up like this, they go right down, and then, and, and it lights up the building, but it doesn't go anywhere, anywhere beyond it. So, if I'm driving down, it's not, it's not glaring in my eyes, it's right down.
Come down Wharf Lane, it does.
It's, it's cutoff, that's what it's called, cutoff luminaire, and, and in fact, they can, they can actually, there's aftermarket frames that they can put on there that, that are decorative, that directs it right straight down. And, and all you want is, is light for security, I'm sure, for security, or, so, and then in the wintertime, now, we, we, you got a couple hours, and it's gonna be dark, and they need lights. But as far as, two weeks ought to be enough time to take care of that. And if you can send the board that, with, with that, I think that.
The fence issue is being resolved tomorrow morning.
Yeah, okay. So, that, that, that addresses the issues that these people have, and you're gonna come back with the other issues now. Now, in the site plan, I don't think, personally, I don't know what the board feels, but I don't think that that C should be on that building, on that site plan until you get approval. I mean, you, how, how can you get a site plan when it's 10 feet from the property line and, and the, and the code requires 15? And it's an expression of non-conformal use.
Well, I, I think what we, we're going to have to do on the site plan is indicate that this building is subject to approval.
Okay.
With a zoning relief.
Yeah, because, because it comes, it comes to the board, the, any, any conditions that, that you might have gotten, or any approvals that you might have gotten to the planning board would, would not.
We'll make it clear.
Would not supersede any, anything that, that came before the board, if it's a violation.
We'll make it clear to the planning board that building C is, is subject to presentation to the zoning board for some type of relief.
Okay. And, and, and you, and you, just so that, I'm making it very clear, is that there will be either, if it's not recalled, there will be an amendment to this, which is gonna require all tenants to come to the board for approval.
I'd, I'd like to do the amendment after site plan, that I think is beneficial for it.
Yeah, but, but, everything now stays status quo.
And I'll give you a status your next meeting.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
When's the next meeting, Julie?
Summer third.
Okay. Anything else, you guys? Okay, I'm gonna close it. Thank you very much for coming.
There's one more person on the back.
We, we, we've already discussed everything, I'm sorry, but.
I've been trying to speak, and you.
All right, what did you want?
Hand grenade, a walk drive, and it's something that all the neighbors are concerned about. The fire chief already addressed it, but I also want to bring that to be on record, that we are concerned that maybe the buildings aren't sprinkled or have a fire retardant. There's always a breeze coming in off the river.
Yeah, see, that, that's not a zoning board of appeals issue.
It is.
No, it's not.
To what, wait a minute, to, he brought it up here.
It's not an issue.
Because of what was being stored in the storage.
It's a building code issue and a fire code. That, that will be addressed, when, when the people come in here, when we, when we talk to each person, that's when the, the fire chief will be here addressing that. And I, and, and with all due respect, I asked if anyone else had to speak up there, and you didn't raise your hand.
I did, I was behind another gentleman.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. I didn't see it, because you've been here, you know, quite long.
Fire engineers are reporting it, I think the chief will get his report tomorrow.
Okay. Good, good, thank you.
I have one question.
I think we, I think we beat this to death, okay? We've taken, I've addressed everything you've addressed.
So, you've addressed that there's gonna be two lights, correct?
No, I didn't say there's gonna be two lights.
That's on number six.
No, no.
Existing lights.[1523.33]